Well, I submitted one online.
Hey.
Good to see you.
Why, why, why?
No work for them to fall.
We've got public testimony on non-agenda items. Jessica or Mary, are you here?
Cheryl's not here.
Okay, it looks like, looks like we're moving on.
Pete tried to come through that door. You're up.
Okay, well, look, I'd now like to ask the Army JROTC color guard from Kearney High School to present the colors. Please stand.
What?
Woo!
Good.
Woo!
That's it.
Woo!
Gary.
Woo!
What?
Woo!
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary.
Woo!
What up?
Woo!
Right?
Woo!
What?
Woo!
Ready?
Woo!
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gary.
Woo!
What up?
Woo!
Right?
Woo!
What?
Woo!
Thank you, please be, please be seated.
I fought that battle already. Long and hard. That was the worst one I had to fight, but I...
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the February 23, 2010 regular meeting to order with all board members present. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium and you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 2:00 p.m. and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the AASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves. Please tell us about yourself and what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. Whoever wants to go first.
I'll go first.
All right. Why? Talk to me.
At my school.
That's right. Good Met practice there.
You're perfect.
Hi, I'm Brianna Concheras and I'm the AASB president at the San Diego Met High School. I am...oh, great. Socially, we just had a winner formal and we're also fundraising. And academically, we are all just waiting for our college acceptance letters. And I got accepted into UC Merced this morning.
All right. There you go.
You can go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Guzman and I'm filling in for Vince Gumiña today. And at our school, we are currently working on a cookbook with the IRC and the goal is to get all the...our school's very diverse, so we're trying to get all the coaches to come together by using that cookbook. And academically, we're trying to get more students to come to our schools, so we're doing monthly drawings as an incentive. And we're also waiting for college letters.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, Dr. Evans, do you want to introduce us to Principal Hinsman and Sandberg Elementary School students?
That's going to be later on in the program.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's time certain. Okay. Okay. We don't have any administrative assignments yet to report out correct, so we'll just go straight to the superintendent's information report and Mr. Kova.
Thank you, President Barrera. Thank you, President Barrera. I have a few items. First and foremost, I had the great honor to attend and present or help present awards at Porter Elementary School's first principal's list of academic awards last week on the 11th of February. Principal there, Lily McMillan, and her staff have done a very nice thing, put together a way of recognizing students for making very good progress on the California Standard Tests. And so we actually handed out certificates and medals, just like the Olympics that's going on right now, to the kids, grades two to six, grades two to six, and about 158 children invited. Actually, 150 were there, standing room only, with the parents. And just a wonderful, I think, example of parent-staff engagement and they have plans for many more of those. So it was a lot of fun to do that. Second item, I think some more good news. Same day that I attended the Porter Elementary Awards celebration, we learned that 10 San Diego Unified Schools have been recognized with what is called the Title I Academic Achievement Award for 2010. And that's for making significant gains in the academic realm, including recognition we're Digital Media and Design International Business at Kearney High, so two of our small schools. In addition, elementary schools included Crown Point, Florence, Jones, Mason, Ocean Beach, Pacific Beach, and a number of our charter schools, King Chavez, Primary Academy and Price at UCSD. I think another reflection of the goodness of the district and of the work that comes together when a campus is fully energized and mobilized for children. Third item, with you and Ms. Jackson, we had the great enjoyment of celebrating groundbreaking at Morris. And I just wanted to bring that to attention of the public because my remarks back then were, it's just amazing what a difference time is. Two years ago, about now, we were coalescing as a district superintendent, board, and staff to determine the right next step was a construction bond. And here we are doing groundbreaking across the district. We just happened to have the most recent opportunity was at Morris for career tech ed facilities dealing with the culinary arts, automotive, and child development. And I look forward to being there for ribbon cutting at some point in time. And the last thing I have is trying to get out of the Ed Center and all of our budget discussions this week. I've got a couple of good school visits, so one along the coast, going to Bird Rock, and one in the deep southwest going to Zamorano, just to walk the campuses, talk to the staff, the principals, and just see how the kids are doing. That's all.
Great, thank you, Superintendent Kova. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
No, second.
All right, please vote. John, could you vote?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, great, so we'll start with information reports from the board. Maybe start with Ms. Nakamura, who had an exciting weekend.
Yes. I led a delegation of PTA parents up to Sacramento this weekend to meet with the legislature at the PTA Legislative Conference that they have every year. Last year, the San Diego Unified School District, the second-largest school district in the state of California with 130,000 students and therefore presumably, big presumably, 260,000 parents. Of course, we don't have quite that many. There are all kinds of families out there. But we sent one person to the PTA Ledge Action Conference last year, one person. And this year, after this was brought to my attention in December, which didn't give us much time to work on it, I worked with the PTA and we did some outreach and we managed to increase that 1,000 percent. We now had 10 people that went. I have to say that that doesn't sound like very many, but the North County Schools and Riverside and Imperial, they send, you know, a couple of dozen people. So our voice was definitely heard. It was really very important. I think what was, it was important for the legislators and their staffs to see that, you know, San Diego does have a presence, that we value our PTA. But it was also important, terribly important for these parents. Those of you that follow Voice of San Diego, Bailing Shaw from Language Academy actually blogged on her experience of what it was like talking with legislators and how serious this budget crisis is. They had a chance to sit down with Denise Tochany, Senator Denise Tochany personally, and listen to her talk about the budget, which is just an experience in and of itself. And so just the education of these parents and what they're going to be carrying back to their schools was tremendously important. I was disappointed we weren't able in such a short time to get so many, but I'd like to point out that every year, every PTA, and we don't have one in every one of our schools, but every PTA is supposed to set aside money to send someone to this Ledge Action Conference, and it's quite expensive. It's about $500 or more per head, per person. And so a lot of these people paid for this out of their own pocket. So in fact, we had one person who came whose daughter is not entering school until next year, but he had heard about it and decided he wanted to participate. And he was, he was phenomenal. It was a great message to send to legislators because, you know, my daughter's coming, what kind of future are you building for her? As opposed to my son's, you know, a junior or a senior, and I'm concerned about schools. He was there definitely for the long haul and he was very, he was just terrific. But we had representation from, if I can remember all of them, I just gave the piece of paper to our staff members, so I apologize, I'm going to have to do this from memory if I miss anyone. We had Bernie Elementary, Language Academy, Deportola, University City, Holmes Elementary. Let me see, that's, anyway, we had a number of people. It was just, it was really great. And Henry, I represent Henry, so Henry High School. But it was a, you know, the PTA puts together a really great program, but I have to especially thank our staff because what we did that I think was unique to this district was we actually briefed our PTA parents ahead of time and talked to them about what were the issues that were important to the San Diego Unified School District. But also, the staff did a phenomenal job in briefing them about the legislature itself, about what to expect in Sacramento, and who these people were. I mean, just invaluable, invaluable information and very professionally done and very well done. So they were well-prepared when they went in there. You would have been so proud of them. But it was, it was important, it was important to do. I think next year, we start early, we go out, we visit these PTAs, we talk about it. And, you know, we, next time, we charter a plane to get them all, you know, everybody. So we have so many people, we're going to take a whole plane. But it was, it was just very effective. And I was telling my colleagues that we had a meeting with Paul Navarro, who is the governor's right-hand person in the governor's chambers. And we had different, the San Diego Unified had a separate appointment with another legislator who was sponsoring a bill for us, Assembly Member Marty Block. And we needed to leave to make that appointment. And, you know, the, you know, we had to get up and half the room left. You know, it was half the room with San Diego Unified. So that was, that was an interesting experience, just the visual of that. It really spoke to the engagement of our parents. But I do want to take a moment extra to talk about this bill, 2272, which is the class size reduction bill that we're pushing up in Sacramento and that we're hoping that our assembly members and senators will not find so much consensus on that they change the bill utterly, which happens to happen, you know, sometimes happens up there, but that they will actually find this as a way that they can bring more funding to the school, to our schools up and down the state. It's a really great piece of legislation and our parents spoke to it well. That message actually got out there. So it hasn't been adopted by the PTA as yet. They need to review it in March, but they've made the commitment to do so. And the fact that our parents were there talking about it and were able to talk about it, I think, a little more fully really helped, should help us with getting the engagement of the PTA. I think they probably would sign on for it, but maybe with modifications, but I think our parents made a very, were a very effective voice in talking to the PTA on why this was important. And since the PTA actually asked me to be a motivational speaker for PTAs outside of, outside of the San Diego Unified School District, I found that amusing because I'm not that great a speaker. But anyway, they, they really appreciated us being there. They were very impressed that so many of our parents made this commitment. It mattered, it mattered. So, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Ms. Ward, would you set the timer, please?
(laughing)
So I don't talk too long.
Hey. That was an editorial con. Yeah, that was an editorial con.
Okay. And I do want to thank Ms. Nakamura for going to Sacramento with the PTA group. I think it's very important that we speak out on all levels about what's going on with the funding and public education. And she mentioned the bill about class size reduction, which could be very beneficial to San Diego. I also want to thank Mr. Barrera for working with our Assemblyman Nathan Fletcher. So the Marty Block, Democrat, and Nathan Fletcher, Republican, are working together to support this, which we'd asked him, means several million dollars for our district. And we really are working at every level, in terms of the school funding issue, at the state level, and also at the national level. The, it's very difficult for us to travel and spend funds. I would have liked to gone to Washington, but I decided not to go because of our current travel restrictions. And I just want to point out that Mr. Barrera is actually covering his own plane flight, covering his own accommodation expenses and so forth in terms of going to that. So I think you can see that there's a real commitment on the part of this board to stand up for our schools, whether in Sacramento or also in Washington. And one other note, and this is just an email I received, I don't know how official it is, but I did receive a notification from a parent at Sequoia Elementary that they had been designated a distinguished school. And I think that was very interesting. We can't sometimes look at the smaller schools and wonder about their value and just the timing is pretty good. It's kind of like if the Padres or Chargers have a winning year, it's a little better for a stadium construction. I think it also bodes well for keeping a school open when they're, when they're doing so very well.
Great, thanks, Senator. Mr. DeBeck?
Let me get my button here. I spent a good part of my time in the last few weeks dealing with angry constituents over the state of the, the safety state and the, and the condition of the football field at Mission Bay High School. They can't play games there. There's been kids hurt. The data has been only presented by the parents, but I'm gathering up a lot of information. And in the process, I discovered something that I think staff needs to investigate. There's a, there's been an ongoing debate about artificial turf and grass.
Real grass, right.
And for some reason, someone has told me that they believe that we may not be as secure as we are about artificial turf because the contracts for installation required mandatory maintenance to keep the guarantees. And in some cases, it's been alleged that these fields have not been given their maintenance and therefore should something really come up, we're going to have a problem. Mr. Markey said he didn't agree with that, so we'll find out. But I think it's important and of course, this big flashy debate about whether artificial turf is safe or not, and the question of whether or not it's as cheap as it seems to be in the long haul, may be something we need to look at. So those are two things that happened in my recent weeks. And I will be, after I gather the information, and I think the parents will want to speak and we'll figure out some time for that. Because there has been, and there's evidence that there have been shifts in the progress priorities which they don't like. I'll just put that. So that's that.
Ms. Jackson?
Again, the item at Porter was great and Mrs. McMillan has sent that previous district east schools that we she was assigned. And it's always been a standing room, trying to get in the door even only. And so, but it's good when leadership spreads their knowledge around the district. And then as far as the Morris is concerned, that groundbreaking, it is extremely important, especially in this time of economic crisis that we are putting people to work. So it's not just what we're doing for the Unified School District, it's the fact that there are people been out there waiting for months to get, you know, get these contracts and go to work, and we're able to start putting people to work. Coming up, this coming Monday night is my Morris Cluster Meeting. I also spent some time with the District Seven Advisory Board and it's stuff with Catherine this weekend, which was a kind of a nice event, gathering the people in the Crawford, well, the District Seven Council District to talk about the youth in crisis. And then Mr. Barrera joined me on the panel for the UAMIC, beloved community in southern part of our district, talk about how we can make education better for the students in that particular area. But we know that in order for us to make it better, we must be out there and we are very active. And I thank all the board members for the support and coming into the district and sharing some of those stages with me. Thank you.
All right. I want to again thank Mrs. Nakamura for taking leadership in the, in the PTA visit.
Thank the parents, they were phenomenal.
Absolutely. And I do also want to thank Assembly Members Marty Block and Nathan Fletcher for co-authoring our legislation, which I think is very creative legislation that brings money back to schools and allows us to keep class sizes down. And, you know, our estimate is if our bill passes, you know, that could save 5,000 teacher jobs up and down, up and down the state and, and keep, keep teachers in classrooms. And it's an example of, you know, a Democrat and a Republican from our region, from San Diego, choosing to think first about kids and second about partisan politics. And I hope that sets an example for the rest of Sacramento as they go about balancing, balancing their budget this year.
How would the legislation work?
We can, the legislation is basically that districts that keep class size below 24-1 and K-3 are not assessed an additional penalty. And then penalties increase when you go above 24-1 and K-3. So for our district, we would save about $20 million over the next couple of years from not paying the penalties at, at 24-1.
But a real selling point also was that it's capped at three years. After three years, it goes back to what it was before.
Well, we don't pay penalties, we just don't get as much.
No, no, it's both.
No, it's both.
It's both. We don't get as much and on top of that, you pay a penalty. So the penalty costs us about $7 million a year that we're paying on top of that.
I had a hard time finding that, but okay. Whatever you say.
The, well, it's, 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 it's the analysis that we've done and it's the legislation that's going forward. The, March 4th, I just want to point out, in Balboa Park at 3 o'clock, a big rally being organized primarily by the students at, at the Community College District to protect funding for education. I think we all need to be there and I think we need to turn out large numbers of people. And it's an ongoing, you know, building from the legislative advocacy that the parents did this weekend. We just need to keep building and building and send a message prior to the next governor's budget in May that we need to take those cuts to education out, as he said he believed we should. So that's what I've got for now. So let's move on to item FO2, the district's initial proposal for administrators, for the AASD, the Administrators Association. Can we get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
We got it. Any comments? Okay.
No. Okay, and then we also need to sunshine the Administrators Association.
I thought we did them both, but okay.
Okay. Okay, item FO4, yes.
You can vote.
Mr. DeBeck, could you vote?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. The consideration of board member reappointment to the California School Boards Association and to the San Diego County School Boards Association Delegate Assembly. So can we get a motion?
I move for free.
Okay.
Then I'll second his.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, and now item FO5.
I'm not voting.
Did you vote?
It's me. It's about me, Cheryl.
Is that you? All right, all right.
I was abstaining from myself.
Okay, we've got appointment of our representatives to the Superintendent's Search Advisory Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Good luck, guys.
Great, that's right, and thank you for agreeing to serve to those folks. And then Mr. Reinerson, you wanted to, and Ms. Wester, you wanted to lead us in a description, a job description and announcement for the superintendent position.
Thank you all for getting your appointments to the committee in. We're, that puts us a week ahead of schedule. I had in the superintendent's plan tentatively set the 18th of March for the first meeting, but I'll be contacting all of them immediately and seeing what a good date is so we can get started. With Sandra and myself, we'll also be working on how to post the announcement. What's before you in this item is a draft announcement that we could put to Education Week, other email sources like Top Jobs at EdWeek and places like that. It's a fairly generally worded announcement without any specific requirements. It, it does indicate the priorities of the board with your Vision 2020. It talks about the importance of working with the San Diego team. I think what I tried to do was incorporate all the things that I have heard from the board about what your values are and to put that message into this document. With your approval, Sandra and I will move forward and start getting this announcement out. We're totally open to your input and edits, but this is really the first step so we can start getting resumes. Then I'll move forward very quickly in getting the advisory committee together and start getting their input on preparing for town hall meetings and interview questions and criteria for this election.
I'm going, yeah, can I? All right. I'm going to go one, I'm going the paragraphs two, three, four, and that's where I'm up to. Four, I have a problem. So, and it doesn't really ring with what I understand the role of the search committee is, advisory committee.
Which document?
It's the fourth paragraph. Application will be screened by a board appointed. It's the fourth, it's the fourth paragraph or fifth, I don't remember. I counted them once, but I'm there now, so I could count again if you want, but that's the paragraph. You found it? Okay. During the search, the advisory committee will hold a series of town hall forums with the board to seek community input about the vision statement and the qualities sought in the new September. The board will select, that's not what I thought was going to happen. I thought the committee was going to select the final group of three candidates. So you're saying, how do we get from... preparing for town hall meetings and interview questions and criteria for this election.
Yeah, can I? All right. I'm going to go one, I'm going the paragraphs two, three, four, and that's where I'm up to. Four, I have a problem. And it doesn't really ring with what I understand the role of the search committee is, advisory committee.
Which document are you on?
It's the fourth paragraph. Application will be screened by a board appointed. It's the fourth paragraph or fifth, I don't remember. I counted them once, but I'm there now, so I could count again if you want. But that's the paragraph. You found it? Okay. During the search project, the advisory committee will hold a series of town hall forums with the board to seek community input about the vision statement and the qualities sought in the new separate. The board will select, that's not what I thought was going to happen. I thought the committee was going to select the final group of three candidates. So you're saying, how do we get from, okay, I mean, if I'm a candidate and I'm looking at it, I want to know, how do I get from turning in an application which will, it doesn't even say it's reviewing, the committee, as I, when I talked to my people that I appointed, I said, "You're going to be involved in the reviewing of the resumes of the people and a recommendation to the board of your three top recommendations." That's not in here.
In the superintendent's search plan, which the board approved at your last meeting, that step is in there.
But what I'm getting at is this is going out to the people who are going to apply, and they need to understand the process.
Okay, that is a good suggestion, and maybe there's one sentence that I left out, which is that step. The advisory committee reviews the resumes. They make a recommendation for seven to be interviewed by the board, and the board can make their own selections independently of that.
All right.
You then pick from those seven, three, and those three, and the reason I put this sentence in there is I thought the candidates needed to know in this announcement that they would be asked to make a community presentation.
Well, I understand. The last sentence, I don't have a problem, but the in-between sentences makes the committee not relevant.
I agree. And I will add a sentence that explains that the committee will screen resumes and select seven for the board to interview.
Right.
So that's a good suggestion, Mr. DeBeck, and I will add that sentence.
And then another point is...
Hold on, so we'll do some rounds, so go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Reinerson, you're from Wisconsin, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm a Badger.
That's right, okay, all right. I didn't even know Wisconsin had that, but, okay. Someone was telling me that Milwaukee actually did a similar search, and I'm wondering if maybe that might be helpful to you in contacting the Milwaukee School District.
Thank you for the suggestion. I'll give them a contact.
Well, it's one of those things that I've been meaning to tell you, and I'm, you know, sorry to do it from up here, but...
Interestingly, Mr. Brisi pointed out that either San Juan Capistrano or a district up in that area is going through a similar process, and they held a town hall meeting actually last week when you had a board meeting. I was actually thinking about going up to it, but they've got a website, which we've looked at, and looked at their town hall meetings. So this is a superintendent search process that, while unique, I think we're seeing other districts around the country look at this.
But it's not so unique.
Right here in our own neighborhood, San Juan Capistrano is doing a similar search.
One of the things I'd like to see is a very, and I know you're capable of doing this, but a very professional brochure that would outline what this process looks like for the district, so that it's, you know, easy to understand and clear.
Yeah, I think we can take this announcement now. We get the suggestions from the board. We will create that, make it a PDF, so we don't have to spend money on printing.
Exactly.
But we'll do something like that with the announcement with some artwork.
Okay, thank you.
Well, on the, I'll call it somewhere in this, it doesn't say it, but where is it implied or told to the applicants that there will be investigations relative to their resumes, or LexisNexis searches, or any of those things that have to do with their, not just, because you're asking them for a letter of recommendation, and I'll pick the very best ones I can if I apply, which I won't. But the point is that should somebody apply, they should be aware of the fact that there will be or should be some kind of confidential investigations of their background, both...
Oh, absolutely.
And, but it's not in here. So the board should at least say somewhere in their thing that the board reserves the right to do independent evaluations in the process, so they know that's going to happen.
I'm going to ask Sandra to address that.
Certainly, one of the things that we can do is add a statement to this job announcement and certainly any other documentation that we submit based on this research. However, the employment application itself does include a statement where we do seek professional references, and it does indicate that we will have an opportunity to do a background check on the employees. And we can certainly be more specific with regards to how detailed we want to do it. We normally could do a work history background in addition to, of course, the requirements of the background checks for actual employment. So we can make sure that the application itself also indicates that we would be looking to not only the professional references, but also reviewing the work history, and we can make a reference of that in the announcement.
The application is not yet developed, is that the case?
It is. It is an online application process, and it does include a general statement with regards to doing background check and pretty much...
Does it also ask them for a professional history?
It does, it does.
Fair enough.
And again, part of this documentation that we are requesting is also a detailed resume. So we can use a resume and also the information provided in the application to be able to do more detailed research on the candidates.
That material will be given to our committees?
Yes. The way the application's going to work, they are electronic. We are working with IT to make sure that we're able to provide passwords and logins to the committee, so they're able to review all of the applications and supporting documentation online.
One last point, and then I'll quit. The committee is a committee of the board, and they're bound by the Brown Act. Is that correct?
It's my understanding from talking to Mr. Brisi that they are, but they can't hold closed session for personnel review.
Of course, but then the closed sessions are confidential as well.
Yes.
And that's a part of their agreement when they become a member of our committee.
Right. And one of the things we were, staff has discussed is preparing a confidentiality agreement to have the members sign so that they know upfront that there are confidentiality expectations of this assignment.
And with no comments, for example, on breach of confidence.
I'm sorry.
And what the consequences might be. Well, I've been through this before, and there've been breaches of confidence with community committees, okay? I mean, I'll be specific if you want, but I don't need to. All right, so the point was, it became public knowledge what the committee was recommending before the board even knew it. So that means there was a breach of confidence.
Right.
All right, now, I want that to not be a part of this process.
Right. Mr. Brisi, do you want to comment on that?
No, I think you hit the details.
Okay, so we will have a confidentiality agreement, and I'll be working closely with the general counsel to follow that direction.
Well, I wanted to comment on the senior management issue. I don't know if we wanted to go to that now.
So with these comments that I've received from the board, then, the suggestion by Mr. DeBeck and Mrs. Nakamura, we'll go forward and finalize this, and we'll set up the committee meeting as soon as we can get this group together. And then I think that kind of covers this part of this item. The next part that Mr. Evans wants to speak to is a related issue.
Jackson, did you want to get in?
Just very briefly, I just want to say this is well done compared to the first one that we had. So I thank you.
Thanks to your input.
Thank you.
Okay, I've just brought forth another proposal in relation to the search for the superintendent. And just a little bit of brief background history is that typically when the Senate Unified has hired a superintendent who comes from out of town, they bring another, a deputy superintendent and sometimes other team members with them. Also typically, that superintendent leaves, the deputy leaves, and other people leave. So one of the things we're trying to do is have more stability in San Diego Unified School District. And one way to do this is to have a more stable structure at the top. Now, through the years, there are lots of different titles that have come up in terms of people managing different sides of the House, but typically, we've had a deputy superintendent who oversees academic affairs in general, and often, there's a person who's overseeing the business side who's had a variety of different titles. So what I just wanted us to clarify early in this superintendent search is how we want to have this senior structure set up. And the way that I am proposing, basically, is that we have one deputy superintendent for business matters and one deputy superintendent for academics. And we've discussed very thoroughly that we support a collaborative model of leadership. We expect the superintendent to share authority among senior leadership, but clearly, we have decided with a single superintendent that the superintendent is the chief executive. So the only thing that is a little bit different, so I just wanted to emphasize in going in this process, is that to maintain the stability of the district, we would have both the board and the superintendent jointly appointing the deputy superintendent for academics and the deputy superintendent for business operations. So that, for example, in the case that the superintendent leaves, which has happened sometimes, that there are two very capable people who are part of our team who would continue to operate the district, or any one of the three, the superintendent or either of the two deputies leave, they would be able to continue that stability. And I just wanted to make sure that it was very clear in early in the superintendent selection process, this one didn't need to be on the timer, because I'm not done. Keep going. And it's important to have it early on, so the superintendent understands that we really expect this person to come work with Team San Diego Unified. We do not expect an overall shift in our staff and so forth. We have very good managers in place, and we want to be very specific about these two appointments. The other issue is that as we are searching for a superintendent, this can come up in terms of candidates for these two particular positions. I'm sure there are many superintendent-type persons who would love to be in charge of academics and not have to deal with the business side of the House, which is what the deputy superintendent would be, and vice versa for the person overseeing business operations. So I just wanted to get consensus from the board on this.
But my understanding...
I just wanted to clarify real quick. Dr. Evans, do you want to make a motion on this recommendation now? Do you want this to be an item that we, you know, think about and come back and have a discussion about what's...
No, I'm making a motion that we adopt this plan, and we can have a discussion about it now.
Okay, first of all...
So we've got a motion, is there a second? I'll go ahead and second the second motion.
Mr. Burren, I wanted to point out that this is included in the job description, so depending on what you decide, it affects this.
Okay, so it shouldn't be there because it hasn't been a board discussion. I think we had a section up here where we said we would have a workshop that we would look at the structure of our district. That is where this should be. It should not be just brought here, and certainly John knows that, you know, my mind is kind of, and I agree, we need to have a different structure. But it needs to be at a workshop where we can put all the ideas up, we can flesh it out, and it's not something that we do very quickly. And I thought we had asked the staff to schedule us a time for to do exactly that. So we did because...
I don't remember that, but, okay.
Well, we said, well, I mean, maybe I said, which is why it didn't happen, but anyway, let us all get together. But what we said was that we needed to have a stable leadership here. We all agreed to that. And we said that we didn't know if it was, and this was part of the organization, the SIOs and all of that, that we needed to look at a different structure for this district, so when the superintendent comes in, we have our structure in place. This, I'm just saying, this should be part of that. We shouldn't have a separate, you know, thing for what you have here and a separate discussion here. It should be all together. And that's what keeps happening in that district. We do a little bit here and a little bit there, and it doesn't always equal out what we want it to happen. So I would just say for right now, I would prefer that we have a workshop where we set up to discuss the executive leadership of this district, you know, format that we lay out totally.
Dr. Evans, would you be open to that idea?
No, absolutely. The reason I put it on the schedule for today was because we were beginning this process, and I didn't want us to delay. But I don't see anything contradictory in terms of us making a note to set up a workshop meeting as soon as possible, which is difficult with all of our workshops, to discuss this item in conjunction with everything else.
Do you want to withdraw the motion then?
Yeah, I withdraw the motion.
Okay.
On the topic, though...
Which means that Mr. Reinerson can't go forward.
Whether it's a motion or not, I think there's, it's clear that there is some question that you need to arrange when you talk to your new superintendent about their openness for alternative ways of managing the district. I would be, while I have some ideas of my own, which I don't mind expressing on occasion, I don't want to constrain the person. I would rather have that discussion with them as a part of our interview process to see if they're amenable to alternative ways of running a district, or, you know, and how they could visualize a set of, I'll call it, leadership people who could stand alone in running their departments in a way that would, because I could add another person, a deputy for accountability, I could add one, a deputy for facilities. But what you really need to do is identify whether or not the superintendent that you're considering has an attitude that would support, I'll call it, releasing some of his authority to people with expertise in the field. That 's not traditional, by the way, for many superintendents, and so that's a good question you can ask. But if you don't have the, I'll call it, the organization in place when you hire the superintendent, then you're best off discussing that with them anyway. So I wouldn't have supported this, but I do believe that it should be part of the conversation we have with anybody we consider when we get down to the three or four people we may want to look at.
Yeah, I agree. It would need to be part of that discussion. I think what's even more important is that we, and this is in line with what Ms. Jackson was saying, is that we clarify ahead of time the basic type of structure we want to have. Excuse me, so that when we are talking to the candidates, that we explain to them how it works, rather than interviewing candidate and saying, "Well, we have an idea. Do you like this, or how would you prefer to do it?" I think if we have a general structure in place, we will need to match up somebody who is in line with...
The guy, the person, he or she that comes, would want to have input into that concern, that situation. In other words, if you say, "Here's an organization, you better fit it," that precludes their experience and their vision of how a district might operate, and would also have a great deal to do with whether they applied, or whether they didn't apply, or what kind of leadership they provided. I'm, you know, I'm pretty much clear about what I believe should be done, but, you know, I don't want to corrupt that with, or corrupt the selection process with my ideas or yours, frankly.
Well, I disagree because, and just to respond to Mr. DeBeck responding to me, that when we hire someone, whether it's the district council or head of technology, whatever, we're telling them, "This is what the job is, this is who you'll work with, this is what you expect, and we'll try to see if they're a good fit for that," rather than asking them to, how they want to run the organization. I think that's a real big difference as far as operating as a San Diego Unified Team.
Don't get me wrong. I agree to the concept of us establishing what our district will look like. I think that one of the points that has happened here is people come in with their new creative ideas and sort of changing things around. I think this board has made it very clear that the board establishes a foundation for this district. We hire someone to come in and run the district, but not reorganize. That has been the problem every time we have a superintendent comes in. If the person that's applying for this job does not want to come here and run it as we have figured out is best, if we figure out the best structure for this district, which is why we had a workshop, and look at all the models that we have had in the past, and what works best, and what is good for our district, and we say, "This is what's best for San Diego. That's our charge of San Diego, not around the United States, but what works best for our people here." If a person does not want to come here and work with that, then I'm sorry for them, they shouldn't apply. For you, Mr. Reinerson, I just think in that third paragraph after the first sentence, yes, the leader thing after the first sentence, we're encompassing the paragraph above that.
Yeah, Cheryl, maybe you could bring that third paragraph up so that everyone could see it. And the question then that I would ask the board, do you want this, just that first sentence, or do you want the whole paragraph? The first sentence is the collaborative model shared among an established senior leadership team. And then, what I understand, the board's consensus, you haven't voted yet, is to take out the next sentence to maintain the stability of the district. So I'm at your pleasure as to how...
This is at which, the third paragraph?
We're looking at the third paragraph.
I went to the end of it.
Of John's item, or of...
No, we're back to the announcement now.
Yeah, the concept of Mr. Evans' item is embodied in that sentence.
The announcement, that's all I want?
Yes.
I will look at the announcement.
Yeah, Mary?
Yes, Ms. McMillan?
I think that this particular structure is, on its face, it's, you know, common sense. It makes sense that you would have, you know, one for operations, one for academics. But what I'm concerned is usurping the management prerogative of the superintendent who comes in hiring his people. I think that if the board hires the deputy superintendent, and in both of these instances, putting those people into place ahead of the superintendent who may come, if it had been someone who'd been in that position for a long period of time and that we knew worked there, that would be one matter. That would be not an unusual set of circumstances. But to, you know, say that we are going to interview, hire, write the job description for, do everything, and by the way, you get to manage them, but good luck with that, because their primary loyalty is going to be to you, it, I think that that's a bit of a, that's, I think is narrowing things a little bit too much. If we had someone in a position who'd been there for a while and was doing a great job already, then, you know, that bothers me less.
I just want to, because I think we've just said that we're going to set up a board workshop, and I think we can...
workshop, and I think we can debate these issues there. I don't know that we want to spend a lot of additional time here because we've withdrawn the action. I think the focus right now is, do we take this, you know, these sentences out after the first sentence in the third paragraph? And I think that makes sense for now to-
Just take the second sentence out.
Take the second.
To maintain the stability.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
Yeah, okay, good. And we've got Jim Barnador to speak on this issue.
And you can't do it concurrently.
Jim Barnador, City Heights. I came down here today to tell you to do what you've just got finished doing.
Yeah.
So thank you very much for doing what I consider is the right thing to do. Let me lend my personal support, and what political support I have, to the notion of settling in on what the district structure shall be. I don't have a recommendation for how it should look, but I do believe that you should settle that, and you should have that firmly in mind before the new superintendent walks in. That said, let me take Mr. DeBeck's questions at face value. We should not have so rigid a structure that a new superintendent cannot mold to it, cannot fit to it, finds it, itches and pinches and tightens. That should not be the case at all. But then I think you can manage that. I think that's a matter for a group of college graduates and a superintendent to manage, and I think you can do that well. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Barnador. Okay, let's move on to item FO7, consideration of the midterm goals.
Excuse me. Were you going to take any action?
We just, the direction-
Just the direction to staff, no action?
Right.
Because we need more meetings.
Oh, take action on the announcement on the, yeah, I'm sorry, on the announcement.
So moved.
I moved that we accepted with that revision.
The two items?
With that.
Yes.
All right, seconded, all right.
Okay, all favor.
President Brewer, was there another action from that last discussion about a scheduling of a workshop for organizational structural discussion?
I don't know, we need to take action, I think we're just-
I just want, I saw that, I heard that conversation, I don't know if you want us to take action as staff side.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but let's get through the budget first.
Thanks, thanks. Okay, item FO7, a consideration of midterm goals.
I have a comment.
This should be, where we left this was, we had one item that we needed to clarify, item 2A, and it looks like item C as well.
I have a comment.
Yes.
First of all, we were looking at item A, and there was the issue, we had said one grade level, and the staff had a little problem with that. But I want to go, but we did not say anything about item C, and our language was changed there, and I just wanted to address this. I think I sent it to staff, but I don't know if they responded. It says, "Monitor individual student progress and establish yearly goals," whereas originally, to the right, you can see, "Measure district success by the percentage of individual students making substantial growth, not just by the percentage of students who are at the proficient level." The point, the way that they changed it for line C makes it more similar to what we would want maybe in our 2020 vision, as far as what we're working towards, that we have yearly goals, it's individually based and so forth. But the transition we're trying to very specifically make here is we have all kinds of reports on what percentage of our students are at proficient level and the different levels and so forth, and we're trying to go to an individual growth model, and one way to keep track of the individual growth model is to keep track of what percentage of students are making substantial growth in a particular period of time. So I would, my motion, first of all, is on item C, would be to change it back to the original language.
So would you say accept this? Any modifications? Is C the right?
I didn't comment on A, I was just saying, I was just commenting on C, and we can talk about A after that. I was just suggesting, making a motion that we leave the original language, which is to the right, on item C.
We gotta second it?
Yes, gotta second it out.
I can support that, yeah, I can second.
Okay, all favor.
I'm trying, I'm trying to, I wonder why we changed it.
I don't know.
Measure district success by the percentage of individual students making substantial Okay, then why don't we stop there?
Well, I just, we're trying to indicate the change.
I want to make it, what's the last, what's the last half of that sentence add to the, to the statement?
Because we will continue to measure how many are at the proficient level and so forth. This is in addition to.
Oh, all right.
Could you vote, Mr. DeBeck?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the rest of it, yes, all right.
I'm with approval of the whole thing.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought he did with that change.
I just wasn't asking him to do it.
Okay, well, I agree with that, I just wasn't, I didn't want to get it messed up.
Okay.
Second. Okay.
All in favor?
Well, I thought we already got there.
Now, when you say that, if I'm against it, am I not supposed to vote?
I'd have voted.
Yeah. Proactive.
Right, okay.
Okay, on to item GO1.
Now, wait a minute, this is page nine of the superintendent process plan, and so it's one, so what we just approved was that attachment, right? But we, did we approve?
Last time we did not approve the midterm goals, exactly because we needed to make this edit, as you said, and so what we are doing today is approving the entire-
So now the whole document, page is 10 and all that on, approved?
We will make that, we will make that update to the plan so that the advisory committee is working with your updated action.
So then, so then page 10 was already approved?
That was what came back to you now for this correction.
No, it was page nine. This is page 10. I'm looking, I'm going through the whole exhibit, okay?
Right.
And page, page, attachment two started with a double hatch at the top, you know, as a beginning page, it's numbered, search process plan, and it has nine, meaning it's the page nine. But following it in the exhibit is page 10, which is there.
That was the 2020?
If it's an error, so be it. But the point is, we didn't approve page 10 just now, did we?
Yes, plus one through seven, I said all of it.
I, to clarify, I will make a motion that we approve the San Diego Unified School District midterm goals, 2009 to 2013.
Second.
All of it.
All of it.
All in favor?
The whole exhibit.
The whole thing.
Okay, all right, all right, so there.
Okay, special education summer school program, establish dates for 2010, superintendent program.
President Brewer, this is just seeking the board's approval for setting the date so that planning and preparations for both staff, parents, and students can go on.
Any discussions?
This is only special ed summer school?
Yes.
All in favor? Okay, item GO2, 2010-11, Title I eligibility ranking for the school district. This is a first reading. I'm going to ask, we've got a speaker on this item, David Page. David, would you like to speak now?
Hi, my name is David Page. I'm the chairperson for the district advisory council of Compensatory Education. The work of our body is to advise a district on this particular item, but more specifically as it relates to the consolidated application, which is a bigger piece of all of this. The first thing I'd like to draw attention to is that the cover sheet for this item says, "The district has provided opportunities for consultation with parents as required by Title I." Actually, this piece is some $23 million of a possibly $50 million budget, so we've not been provided consultation with the entire budget. If you include the federal funds from ARA and SFSF, we've never been consulted on those in a meaningful manner, where we could actually talk before activities are done. So if you add $70 million to the 50, of $120 million, you're consulting with us over 23, just to put that out there. Regarding the ranking report, which is what this work is, the DAC, for a couple of years now, has been concerned about the effects on school sites who pop in and out of the 60%, 40% or the 85% levels when we have a fixed number for a particular grouping. So when you lose just a few students and fall from, say, the 85% into the 60%, the schools tends to lose a large amount of money, and so we've always proposed that you use a graduated scale for that, so that the effect on the schools is only representative of their student body, not necessarily a particular tier. So what we're asking is, is having tiers is good, but use the actual student body and scenario number two, which would reduce the impact on schools that cross over those lines of the actual tiers. We're asking that you continue with status quo of funding to 40%, especially in light of the status of the district's unrestricted budget. But we are concerned about the use of ARA funds in consultation with that, and we're asking, what I did was, in my meeting, I asked, "Where would you have spent the ARA funds? Would you have focused it on just the program improvement schools, or would you distribute it to the schools in general?" And asked them to provide a plan for that. And the actual result of that survey was that they would have more appreciated having that money go to all schools as opposed to just a few. Specifically, when you think of what the work of this district is to produce a graduated student over 13 years, and when you focus that money on the K2 instead of your final product, what you've done is you've created a district that provides K5 education, and from six through 12, it's not as important to you to turn out a finished product that statistically goes into the prison system. So we would have appreciated had you spent more of those ARA funds on your final product, which you know your data shows needs the most work, and not give up on them with them having the largest class sizes and the least amount of supports, when you've got more time to deal with K2, because they're your, they're a larger project, you've got time to work with them. Also, we're asking that you reconsider changing the support systems for the, Brenda Campbell's office, the district believes, the DAC has in mind that to have a program with 10% more money because you have less oversight is not going to give you 10% more effectiveness. Actually, we think that a 90% program with 10% of oversight and ongoing technical support and training is going to give you a more effective program and be actually more cost-effective using 10% less money because you've got oversight, training, and ongoing support.
I have just, in clarification, I mean, there's listed scenario one and scenario two, and then there's scenario A and scenario B. I'm assuming it's four separate scenarios, and it's just a little bit confusing by the titles, but my understanding, just to make sure this is clear, with the current system obviously is with the 40 to 60, 60 to 80, and 85 to 100. And then what DAC is supporting is basically this, pretty close to the same range from $136 to $442, just with the gradual, graduated, so just like with income tax levels or whatever, that it doesn't, you don't just bump over into something and lose a tremendous amount of funding. So that part seems reasonable to me.
Dr. Campbell, do you want to speak?
Good. There is a difference between the scenario one and two. The status quo with scenario one would be with the tiers. What you find with scenario two with the sliding scale, that there is an incremental kind of increase or decrease with $6 by per student. In looking at analyzing the particular sliding scale, depending on what you look at in terms of what's significant in terms of increase or loss, it varies anywhere from $6,000 to $20,000. So as you go down the scale, you can see there's a difference in schools, but it's not by necessarily consistency in terms of that number gradually going down. That's one of the reasons why we recommended scenario two and one, is because it is status quo, it is the same system that we've been operating for the last several years, it is stable in terms of what schools expect in terms of money, so they can depend on that kind of income to help design their SPSA.
So if I understand, the staff is recommending scenario one, and the DAC is recommending scenario two?
Correct.
And, okay.
I wish I could have, I wish we had a series of schools, because I want to be sensitive to what the DAC is saying, and I do appreciate, you know, this tremendous loss of funding all of a sudden, even though, well, not tremendous, tremendous is when you fall out of Title I completely. But how much are we talking about on a per school?
Some schools are getting hit by 30,000, 34,000, at the top.
So they lose $34,000.
That's the top law, no, here's one, 40,000 or less.
Do we have the, do we have a copy of this?
That's Webster.
This is, you should never go out of town, you can't get all the material.
I guess a question would be-
Attachment three.
I don't know if we can answer this specifically, but referring to what Mr. Page was saying, how often does it happen that a school is bumped, I mean, between one of the three levels? Well, obviously, below 40, there's nothing that can be done about that. If someone's around 38, 39, 41, they're just in or out. But for the other two, you know, the cutoff at 60 and 85, and a school, for example, in the last couple of years, a school moving up or down, how often does that happen?
I could not give you the history in terms of the schools, in terms of their increase or decrease in their free and reduced lunch information, but finance could, budget could, because they are the ones who develop the schedule, so if they would like to come forward and address that difference in price, we can do that. We also can provide you with a scale where we could do the difference between the two if you would like, to see how much money would be from scenario one and scenario two.
Okay, this is first reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, my take on this is I prefer the recommended scenario two. It seems to be, I don't know, it seems just-
I know, it's so tiny.
Because it's scaled like it is, and it goes on and on, by the way, it's not just the first page you look at. This spreadsheet goes all the way down to the 40%, right? 42% actually is the last school, because the next one below it is 37.
Technically 40%.
Right.
So, but it looks to me like, it seems to me like the committee must have thought it was fair, and I, my general view is it is, but fair is, depends on who's looking at it.
Yes, and look at example with Burbank as a possibility.
Can you give us what, what's Burbank?
Burbank.
You know, it's not like this is alphabetical.
So Burbank is number nine on your chart.
Right.
Whatever's, how it was indicating the difference was 157 versus 155.
I don't see it.
So it varies from a small percentage, and then you can increase, and you see the next school again, you have 259 to 257, and what I'm doing is doing a comparison between the two charts. And then if you go to the next one, it would be 289 to 286.
I hope they're getting this on camera, because we all look so attractive, flaring at this.
Right, but the rationale is that it's for the year-to-year stability, because once it's set for the year, it is what it is for the year. So it's just the idea that uncertain years, some schools with the current system, where Mr. Page is saying, experience a real, a real big shift, upward or downward, rather than a gradual shift from the year before.
What I'm hearing is that we could prepare a chart that would have last year's and this year's status quo, and then scenario two with the sliding scale with this year proposal and the status quo difference.
That may not be necessary. Let's take a, it just, maybe you could just pencil that out for us. So a school that fell from, you know, say, from 50% down to 40% under scenario one would experience, just pick a school, would experience what amount of loss in the school, you know, just, actually, you could come back in 10 minutes with that, couldn't you?
Sure.
Okay, I want to wait, you want to-
With Debbie's help, I can.
Before we do this, let her pencil that out for us and then come back to it?
Well, there's, if I see this right, there is, if a school falls out, which I don't know that shows any of the do, they lose all their money.
Right.
If they go below 40%.
If it's below 40, then they go below 40, yeah.
We used to have a deal for some schools that where they fell out, we gave them a one-year kind of window, and then was averaged out, so they didn't take a complete shot in the head.
Yes, it's still, it's still true.
So, and I was trying to wait till next week, but I look here and I see Oak Park on scenario two is losing $80,000, and Canto is losing $60,000, and they know me, I want to know where that money is going to.
Yeah.
So that means somebody is increasing, and-
Right.
Well, no, not necessarily. If you read the report before, it said that there was, there were reasons why the money, there were more people in program improvement, there are more schools that are, have higher there were more people in program improvement, there are more schools that are, have higher, because we've had an increase in free and reduced lunch. There are now more schools that are eligible in this category than they were before, which was, there's money to spread around.
Almost twenty. I don't worry.
Yeah, Dr. Kova, please. Mr. Brendan Kova.
David, go ahead. Could you look at the difference between Paradise Hills and Oak Park?
Well, we could if you could. You have to realize these screens are so tiny, David, Mr. Page.
That's right underneath.
I know, but I'm not, on page what?
It's on page two, number forty-eight.
Okay.
Okay, there we go, that's, okay, forty-seven.
So what's the point?
If Oak Park lost students and became in the same area as Paradise Hills, they would only receive two hundred and seventy-four dollars in that budget year because of student movement, not because of academic achievement or anything like that. So look at the ratio, just, it's easy math, you don't got to call anybody on the phone. If Oak Park moves down one step because of student changes, they only get two seventy-four, they lose two hundred dollars a student, that's more than your sixty thousand dollars, I bet.
But under your scenario, they'd lose how much? What would happen to them under your scenario?
Well, this is going to be an adjustment, because everybody gets realigned. The point being from there forward, if Oak Park-
But let's say we're there next, yeah, let's say we're there. How much, under your scenario, what would the scenario be?
You said they lost sixty thousand this year.
She lost sixty thousand. She's saying that she lost sixty thousand. I said that.
Okay. How many students-
Control what? And what? Oh, you, hey, they just taught me something.
Three hundred students at Oak Park, next year, three hundred times two hundred is how much money they would lose just because of student movement. If we adjust them one time now, in all of these schools, that won't have to happen, that you jump as a principal from four hundred and some dollars to two hundred and seventy dollars.
Exactly. I understand that, thank you. I understand it gradually.
And you do get one year grant.
Yeah.
Okay. I missed that, because the students were teaching me new technology, all right. Can you, can you, I'm sorry, they were teaching us how to make this larger. You hit, you hit the control with the plus sign, all right? It's like, okay?
If you don't have a computer at all, you just.
Yeah, but I bet I could.
Yeah, I think, you know, the issue here is a little bit of comparing apples and oranges in the sense that when we're looking at the charts that we have, it's what you would get under scenario one, and what you get under scenario two, and then, of course, every, for every school, we're going to be looking at, my school goes up, your school goes down, and so forth and so on, by, for next year, according to which school we choose, right? But the issue that Mr. Page is bringing up is not this sort of comparison, it's more like a, we'd have to look like at a five-year comparison, like how often does a school bump from the eighty-five to the eighty-four, or from the sixty, seventy-one to sixty-nine? Because those are the ones that are seriously damaged, or obviously an equal number are seriously helped, but it creates some instability. So it's two different things, comparing this year, which plan helps this school more, and when, what's fair in the long run, correct?
So I've asked my DAC to speak philosophically, and I don't like them showing the money, because as soon as we start talking about money, everybody says, well, high schools shouldn't get any, there's only sixteen, they get outvoted. I'm asking the board to think philosophically here, that is it better for the principal to have a graduated change in budget in their Title One, as opposed to being jarred now and then because you happen to live in that area? I know you're asking how often it happens, I'm just telling you it happens. And it does only impede just a few schools, but when it happens to them, it's a big issue.
I know it's the status quo, Dr. Campbell, but what is the, what's your other concern aside from that?
Well, and conversely, if you're looking at population, and you're looking at per pupil allocation, then should we go with a gradual scale or sliding scale, or should you do it according to the tier?
No, I got that, but what I mean is, it's, she's recommending the tier, but, I mean, is it, is it, like, is it, I mean, there is in the law also, I mean, would this be difficult to administer, and under, you know, I know you don't think so, Mr. Page, but I'm asking the person who's administering it. Would it, would it, would it be, because there is, you know, a standard under administrate, you know, administering something, if this would be difficult, and, yeah, Mr. Kova, feel free to jump in.
Sure. What we have here is just two variations on the tiered approach, where Mr. Page's focus is on a more graduated, but we're still operating under the tiered, three-pronged approach, with forty percent as the cutoff, which we've done for many, many years. But the other thing, there's two dynamics-
Do we need an algorithm to do this?
No, 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 no.
I mean, we'd have to have Mr. Ugase, you know?
I don't think it's that hard, but there are two other dynamics I just want to bring up here, is that from year to year, other forcing functions include how many schools are in program improvement, and has there been any shift in enrollment and in the free reduced lunch profile. So every year, you will find some variation across all the schools, where Mr. Page is trying to point out, is that if there's a notable flip up or down, there's some softening, and where Dr. Campbell is, it's among a more standardized flow across three tiers. But every year, you're going to have a little bit of bump.
I understand that. I mean, I completely, I know sometimes-
But it's not hard to create this matrix.
It's not hard, it wouldn't be difficult to implement, because it makes sense to me that you would want to be, you know, you wouldn't want this jarring effect between schools, that it'd be more humane to have, you know, something a little smoother instead of, you know, so.
Is there a reason, Dr. Campbell, that you're recommending scenario one rather than?
Can I support her?
Support scenario one?
Yeah.
You want to contradict yourself?
I don't care, I'm just for the students.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The question I want to pose here is, here's the choice you make, that if the students that are eighty-five percent and higher are most deserving of the most money, then you would have a line in the sand somewhere that says, these get the most, most. And that's why it's so stark, between two hundred and seventy dollars and four hundred and forty dollars. Philosophically, you say, okay, we've got to put a line somewhere to help the most students with the most money that are most impacted by free and reduced lunch that relates to academic achievement, if it does. I don't know that it does.
But is that, Dr. Campbell, is that the reason you're recommending scenario one?
Somewhat to that, that's part of the reason, and what schools have done is built their programs on their Title One fundings, and so they have programmatic things in place, and structure in place, that if you adjust what we're doing, it's going to cause instability.
Cause a ripple effect throughout the entire, okay, well, that, all right, so they can't plan.
Right.
So what I'm seeing is that, what Mr. Page has pointed out, is that from year to year over a period of time, there are these people that get bumped up and bumped down, and have a pretty drastic change-
A few people.
-in their budget, a few schools, but a pretty significant change. But the issue right now is that that's what makes the very graduated one a fair system, but the first year that you do that, it affects everybody a little bit.
No, it would affect every year, it would affect everyone a little bit, because the flow would change, it'd be constant-
But there's always a change every year in terms of the number of students that you have.
But you'd only affect the funding at every school that particular year, so in tier one, you would affect harshly perhaps for those schools, I mean, you would have a fairly dramatic change, right? But in order to do this correctly, in order to create an algorithm where you've got a different, you'd have a different level of funding every year, and you'd never know what you could count on-
Right.
-for your purchase power.
Right, because you never know how many Title One students are going to have.
You got it.
Right, but it's not, it's not as drastic, but it affects every single school.
Yes.
So we gave it due consideration.
But it affects every school even more, right, this year.
Right, right, so, but this is-
Any other comments right now about scenario?
I move scenario one.
We're not voting, we're not next week, I'm very quiet.
You did say that. You did say that.
Dr. Campbell, before you, it's, just a related item, we've had this discussion now for, I think, over a year on the ability of schools to use Title One to reduce class size. And so we had that discussion, we know that up until last year, schools had been doing that. Last year, we gave direction to schools that they couldn't do that. What is the clear answer today about why schools can't? If the answer is that schools cannot use Title One funds to reduce class size, what are we basing that direction on?
The Title One regulations indicate that the board will set policy. So whatever direction in terms of your policies that are made for the core, and if you make a baseline kind of budget for schools, where you're accommodating every child by numbers for personnel, teachers, then that is saying that you've already covered what is considered baseline for the district. So for Title One funds, it can only supplement what you have decided as a board, as a policy. So we cannot then come in and provide class size reduction, because you've already made the consistent placement of numbers of kids by teachers. We can do push-ins that would supplement and assist the teachers. We can do creative kind of configurations with teachers that would have a totally different classroom, that's not a core classroom, that would be a classroom that's helping those students who need it the most, based on test scores and curriculum.
That doesn't make a lot of sense to me, the, the idea, I get the argument of supplement versus supplant. What I don't understand is why it's, what is it supplanting? If we say, here's your allocation of teachers, and here's, you know, in some cases, the range of class sizes, and we say that for all schools, and then a school says, okay, what I want to do now is I want to use my Title One money, just like the language academy uses its magnet school money to bring class size down in fourth and fifth grade, what are they supplanting?
Supplanting the teachers or the number of teachers that you have already allocated. So you've allocated the baseline number for each classroom by students. If you wanted to reduce class size, then you would have to have a teacher who would not have students on a class role issuing grades, but more of a support to what is already in place. And that would be the supplant versus the supplement.
I totally agree with Richard on this. The concept is this, supplanting means you're taking money and substituting Title One money for it.
Yeah.
If you take the money for a school that you get baseline, general fund dollars, and you decide, okay, we're going to organize a school, and we're going to add more money to our budget, and we're going to spread it across Title One kids and make class sizes for all the Title One kids in the school, which are supposedly equally distributed, that is not supplanting the general fund, it's basically enriching the classes for all students, including the Title One kids. That's sort of like, what you call that, what's the deal when you, when you apply Title One to the whole school?
School-wide.
School-wide improvement. Well, it is a school-wide improvement if you change the class size for all the kids, and if you added more staff in a way to reconfigure your grades so that you can get the class size reduction out of Title One money, I cannot see that as being supplanting.
Yeah, Dr.-
I mean, I honestly cannot see it as supplanting.
I want to chime in, because I agree with Mr. Barrera and Mr. DeBeck on this very strongly. Let's just take some real simple numbers. Let's say that all schools are the same size, and they're all, throughout the district, and they're all provided twenty teachers at every school. Now, supplanting would be, at the Title One school, we're going to take away five of your regular teachers, and we're going to stick in five Title One teachers, and so we're really substituting, you know, Title One money for general fund money. But if all of the schools in the district, in just a simple example, have twenty teachers at each school, then we can say, we want at the Title One schools to have twenty-five teachers, and that supplements, it does not supplant, it does not substitute, it adds to what they're doing. They're getting, they're getting everything that everybody else is in the district is getting, and getting more, because that's the whole purpose of Title One. You provide everything that students need, and then you give them more.
I can only give you the definition that I've received from CDE, and if the board decides they want to use Title One funds for class size reduction, it would be your justification of the usage when they have any questions about it. I think that they would say you probably could use Title Two funds, because it is for class size reduction, as Title One is specifically for supplementing.
But that is supplement.
Well, you know, that's, I, we've already said our point on that, but the, but the argument about, if the board decides it, I agree, there might be some questions about the board taking over Title One and running the show, but if we say it's permissible for site governance teams or SSCs to decide to reduce class size using their funds, I'm going to argue that one all the way to the Supreme Court, because I honestly believe they have a right to make decisions that benefit their kids, that supplement the regular funds that we give that school.
That's what it's supposed to be used for, to, hey, go ahead.
David, do you want to speak to this?
So I'm a parent, and I sit on school site councils, and I know of the school site councils that, that make the easy decisions, that they don't want to cut a teacher because they like the personality, so they make them a hole to live in, and they use Title One for it. Speaking of effective use of Title One, if you really want to close an achievement gap, meaning you're going to accelerate learning for the lowest performing student, which is what that Title One is supposed to be for, that is not the most effective way to have that. If you have one position at your school available for push-in, how many more students can one push-in teacher service than one classroom that happens to get reduced? And I'll tell you what happens, because I know the examples, and I'll file the complaints if we want to go this route, that some schools pick a science teacher when science isn't even on the radar for academic achievement acceleration in a school site, when you should be raising the level of English, language arts, and math-
David, David, I want to-
So often, they're not appropriately hired.
I agree with you there.
And I understand that's not what you're talking about, I want to throw that out there, that when you open the door, and you don't support her office to monitor who they hire and what they're hiring for, we're going to find they're going to be hiring these teachers without using data in their single-
I just, I think this goes back to, I think the way that Mr. DeBeck framed this is exactly what I, what I believe, that I, I think this board should give to schools the discretion to use Title One money to reduce class sizes, as long as we as a district aren't making a decision that we're going to increase class sizes across the board, and then as, you know, in reaction to that, schools then go and reduce class size with Title One, I mean, that's supplanting. But right now, I just think the direction needs to be to principals and school site councils, that it's an option that's available to you, as it had been every year until last year.
Well, I guess my point is a little bit different, and my point is only different in the fact that whether we like it or not, these are federal monies. And when federal people come down to, take us through our inspections, whatever they call it, audit us, when we get audited, and I use example, a few days ago with someone, I said, if I give you Title One monies, and they spend inappropriately, and we get slammed with a six million dollar hit, and that hit has to come from our general fund, I can't now go back to you, because you did it, you did it incorrectly, and say, I'm going to take six million dollars from your school. I can't do that. It's also not fair, because we, because I'm talking about us, you know, doing our cluster thing, it's also not fair for me to go back to your cluster and say, because school X over here did not use their funds appropriately, and we got slammed with this, this sanction, this fine, we're going to now decrease all of your funding by a certain amount. One of the things that had, we have done, because we are a large district, is that when we get hit with a six million or whatever, and fines, we absorb it centrally. When we start pushing, and this is, and I've been praying for our cluster, they'll push out, when we push things out to clusters and to schools, and we get those fines, we have to decide, how do we deal with those fines, if the person that is doing it, how they discipline, are they removed from their job, are they given letter of recommendation, whatever? But those things have to be worked out, because it's not a matter of saying, I mean, I believe the same thing, but if the federal people are saying, we're giving you this money, and it can only be spent this way, and we spend it differently, when we get audited, believe me, they're going to fine us, and that fine cannot come back from our general funds, it's all gone.
Yeah, I just want to, just real quick, respond to Ms. Jackson, and I, I agree with what you're saying, I just have yet to hear a definition that schools using Title One money to reduce class size, like we did already last year with the stimulus Title One money to reduce class size in the twenty-five schools, I've yet to hear a definition that that is inappropriate. If it's inappropriate, I'm with you.
Yeah, because we didn't, as a district, we decided as a district not to reduce class size as a district, so that we could use our stimulus money to reduce class size. That was what we did last year. So that's how we got around that, because the question was, if they come and audit us, how do we be able to say that we reduced class size? Well, our core class was not reduced, but our Title One classes was.
What you're saying, you're talking about maintenance of effort, not of supplanting. Okay, that's a real difference. You know, if we decide to cut class size-
Yes.
-that's the baseline for all the schools in the district-
Exactly.
-then how can you say that Title One schools that choose to decrease class size are supplanting? They're not, because they're taking the baseline money.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, I mean, but, but could you say, were we maintaining effort? No, we weren't.
So Ms. Nagamore and then Mr. Koba.
Right, well, it is, you know, as I've mentioned before, we are, as a large school district, quite a target. People like to make an example out of us, and, you know, I have been down this rote route before, where, you know, we had approval from the state of California to use money, use Title I money in our, in our, you know, retirement. And, I mean, they said it was okay, and that we and they were channeling through them, and they thought it was going to be just hunky and dory, and that was, that was a lot bigger folks than Dr. Campbell over here, let me tell you, people that you really thought you could rely and hang your hat on their opinion, and all due respect, Dr. Campbell, you know, they were way up the food chain, as far as all of us down here in San Diego may be, and we relied on that, and then to have it come back five years later and have the federal government say, mm, 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 no, we've, you know, we know that was an undisputed area of the law, but, but we disputed it now, and we decided it was on our side, so we're going to fine you. You know, it was almost, it was really difficult, and, you know, we had to cough up the money. So I, I agree with you, it'd be nice if we could use it this way, but if we're going to, you know, I think we better do some, I did not, I wouldn't be talking with Dr. Campbell, I'd be talking with Mr. Brazzi over here, and asking him for a cost benefit analysis, identifying any other school districts that have done this, are there any court cases, are there any, you know, do we, what kind of legs are we standing on here, and, you know, what's the, what's our assumption of risk? What's our exposure?
Mr. Koba.
I was looking at Mr. Brazzi.
Well, I was going to agree with Mrs. Nagamore, and also add one more cautionary note, because these are high-profile funds, sometimes folks don't consider the purposes, we talk loosely about Title I funds, but we run the whole gamut, from Title I, II, III, IV, so not only do we have to be, and I agreed with trustee Corr that described supplant as where I'm with it as well, but if we're going to use Title I, if that's the color and specific category of money for class size, we better be certain about it, and we ought to be certain about purposes across all of the different titles too, just to be aware.
And then Mr. Brazzi, did you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it's something that we can and should look into. I'm aware of districts that have, for example, left the state class size reduction program at K through 3, and then used Title I money at Title I schools to, to go back into class size reduction, and with the, the argument that, that you were talking about. I don't know if there have been challenges to that, or any administrative sanctions or anything like that, but it's something we can look into.
My concern is that we've seen this over and over again, that an itty-bitty district and an itty-bitty pool can do it, and, you know, maybe they don't get called on it, but, but this district, this size, we do something like that, and then it's, I'd be more comfortable if it were not some small district, you know, up in Yolo or something, or Toolumi, but that, you know, that it's a district, you know, like Sacramento, or San Francisco, or Chicago, or, you know, or L, well, you know, LA, who knows what they do, but, you know, but a large urban district with the same type of exposure that we've got, you know, what's the position that they're taking, because it's.
Mr. Koba, can you come back to us, I guess we're taking this up at our next board meeting, the allocation, can you come back?
I've already taken it on that.
But, but with clarity for the schools, so that when they get there, it's either a yes or a no, and if it's a, if it's a no, it's, it's just got to be a clear no that I'm hearing right now, because I'm not here.
I think investigate it, I mean, I'm willing to, I'm just not.
Okay.
I don't want to stand on this platform.
Go ahead, Ms. Jackson, yes, yes.
Just kind of quickly, for the, for the staff, Mr. Brazzi, as we're preparing for the future, knowing that we want to look at a different model, is there possible for, I put reserve for Title I, so if we are actually, you know, pushing things out to decide, is there some kind of reserve funds in case we ever get slammed, that we're, you know, protecting ourselves?
Okay. We'll move on to, to item GO3.
Excuse me, President Barrera. We took the one action to confirm class size reduction applications with Title I, or federal funds, let's put it that way. Was there any other direction with, this was the first read, any other guides for a second read follow-on with regard to the Title I distribution?
Are there any other, on this question of the?
No, I think it was explained.
No, I think, no, I got it.
Yeah.
Although I have the distinct feeling Mr. Page explained this to me last year. Feel like a goldfish.
Let's move on to item GO3. So this is public hearing and resubmission of the general waiver request for Roosevelt Middle School regarding.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Good. Okay, item HO1, district school calendars for 2010-11, Mr. Koba.
That's a calendar committee recommendation, I don't know, Mr. Reinderson, if you or Linda Zinnz want to comment to that?
Good afternoon, President Barrera, board members, and Superintendent Koba. I'm here on behalf of the district joint calendar committee, and for your approval, their recommendations for the 2010-11 school calendars for both the traditional and year-round track. The calendar committee has a longstanding history here in the district, and it's comprised of equal representation of the different stakeholders in looking at the calendar and bringing recommendations to the board. Last February, you asked that the committee be reconstituted and looking at the makeup of the group to make sure that it was equitable, and you actually have a roster in front of you of the new members of the committee. There are voting members, and then there are non-voting members. I was named the chair in September. This particular group will also, with the decision to rotate the members every two years, so this same group that is bringing forward this calendar will also be working on the 2011-2012 calendar, and I'd like to publicly thank this group who's come together to work on this calendar. The committee met on February 4th, and we had a very lively discussion, and I would like to say this group has lots of ideas on, on what we can do with the calendar, and talking about when we should start school, and should we have just one calendar, but in the interest of time for the 2010-2011 school year, they made the decision just to base it on what the district has done traditionally, based on the 180-day instruction, starting the day after Labor Day, the Tuesday, September 7th after Labor Day, and continuing with the mandated and the declared holidays. The one decision that they did look at was changing spring break. When they looked at the calendar for 2011 spring break, which has traditionally been scheduled the week preceding April, actually, preceding Easter, actually falls the last week in April, it would be April 25th to the 29th, and the district felt, the committee felt very strongly that that would have an impact on students' and teachers' ability to prepare for the spring star testing, and also would mean that there was a long, many, many school days before, between winter break and spring break, and then a short amount of time after starting in May till the end of the school year. So the committee would like to see the district move to a standard spring break, where there would be a discussion that it would always fall the same week, and they didn't come up with an answer, I think they'll look at that more closely in 2011-2012, but they did recommend that for 2010-2011, that spring break be scheduled the first week in April. For traditional schools, it would be April 4th through the 8th. For year-round schools, they would also start April 4th, and then they would continue through the 26th of April. And that's the only change to the 2010-11 school year. They are looking though, for the board's support in, for the 2011-2012, looking at the possibility of going to a common calendar, taking a look at what other districts have done. We know across the county, there have been some changes starting before Labor Day, but they recognize that a change of that significance, we would need to do a lot more engagement with stakeholders, parents, students, other staff, but they felt like the change for 2010 and 2011 with that spring break, that we would have adequate time to notify parents and staff that there would be this change.
Thanks, thank you, Linda.
Okay, I have, I have a question.
First, let me just ask, can we get our motion to adopt this?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
Okay, I have, well, a couple of questions. First question was exactly that, starting before Labor Day, and I think that that came up again last year, and I'm sorry that we didn't get out and talk with parents and stuff again before that. The second item, I do have a problem with us having a traditional week of spring break. I think that our neighbors to the north have tried that, and what they find is that families are gone two weeks now instead of one, and some are gone three weeks instead of one. And so that is going to be, have a significant challenge to ADA in middle part of the year. And, and while maybe some of the committee members thought that there's this long break, this is, you know, there's not a break between winter break and spring break, because it's so long, that actually may be a good thing, because when you look at the days that people have instruction in February, like in this month, there are not a lot of active school days.
Right.
And so, so one of the things that it does, is it does give teachers more of an opportunity to, to, you know, give students that boost that they need, you know, just before they start testing. So I, and so I can't, number one, I can't support having a stationary spring break at the same time each year, I think it's going to hurt our ADA in the long run, and I think people that have tried it already have seen that. I know they've seen that.
Mr. DeBeck.
Well, well, I'm looking at this, I'll call it, spring break of almost a whole month.
For the year-round schools?
Well, the one I'm, the one I'm looking at, yeah.
That's for the year-round.
I took the one that was supposed to be a come, oh, single-track year-round.
Right, yeah.
Well, there's a lot of time to lose, a lot of instruction there, that's, that's almost as long as some school districts have summer school. Anyway, okay.
But, but with all due respect, that's the time that year-round schools take for their spring break traditionally.
Well, okay. Well, he's just a, maybe I, you really have to put them all together to get the picture, so I should have done that.
Thanks.
Dr. Ravensman.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that's certainly worth considering as far as the, the spring break at the beginning of April. I know that so many places do it so differently, that there is no longer a particular week that is known as spring break anymore, because of some doing it Easter, some doing it other times, and I think you have to kind of look at the academic calendar. One little detail that I've always been very bothered by is having the last day of school on a Monday.
Right.
And I know that you have a certain number of days and holidays and fit in, but it just, when it's just only Monday, Monday and Tuesday bothers me a little bit, especially just on Monday.
And the committee had that same concern, but what I learned, it's all about the numbers. So you go through and you count 180 days, and that's what you end up with in some years, not all years.
Right. So you might start a couple of days earlier or later, or something, to get it to come out to a different day, right?
Yes.
But that's not been my understanding, the reason, my understanding has always been that the reason we do that is to avoid the high school seniors going on a drinking binge that weekend and getting into car accidents, you know, so that they actually, because it reduces accidents, and it reduces kids getting into trouble when you have that on a, on a Monday, and it does, you know, that's.
My experience is it makes it worse.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because they have the Monday night, graduation night, which is very controlled, and the weekend before is crazy.
Well, speaking as a board member and not as a single person, you know, it's, you know, that it does seem to reduce it overall for the district, over historically, but that's one point of view. And another, and this is going to sound really way off, have we looked at what the, the adoption is for the, you know, at the universities? Now, this, I'm speaking as a parent, you know, the summer camp programs, are those spring break camp programs and all the rest of that, are frequently staffed by SESU, UCSD, Point Loma Nazarene, you know, the college students, Mesa, all the rest of that. Have we looked at any, when they're having their spring break, or thought about it? They used to be coordinated. We used to know, you know, throughout the city, there was more coordination.
And I don't think that's the case anymore, unfortunately.
Yeah, no, it wasn't. Plays havoc on my family life, I can tell you, because we have a lot of university professors, you know, here in this city, and a lot of them have their kids in our schools, and they're on spring break at one time, and we're on spring break at another, but also this summer, you know, and that's just the way it is, but for the summer camp programs, you know, it does make, you know, quite a bit of sense.
And there was some discussion amongst the, the committee, particularly with those representing high schools, that as we look at the 2011-2012, how we can maybe make some accommodations to work better for seniors in high schools as they prep for college that way. But it seems like, as you say, traditionally, spring break used to be that week preceding Easter, I remember that's how it was when I was going to school, but it's really all over the map right now.
Yes.
So I think it would be a challenge for us to all partner together, so as the committee looks at it.
Well, I think the best, it is, it is best, I mean, the overarching priority, I think, does have to be our student teach, our student testing, and how we can best prepare for them.
So we've got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Oh, I voted, I don't know where the rest of you are.
You already voted, all in favor.
Okay, even though you've all cut me off, but.
All right, that passes.
Thank you.
Okay, item HO2, authorization of Prop S funds for site improvements to the Alba-North Park School and the Joint Use Playground areas. Ms. Koba?
Move approval.
Move approval, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. We've got a speaker actually on this, maybe a couple of speakers, so we got Omar Passans and Mike Forbes.
Good afternoon, my name is Omar Passans, I'm in the 3600 block of Villa Terrace in North Park in San Diego, and the board members are about to make a vote, that's really about opportunity. I went to Encanto, and then to O'Farrell, I'm a San Diego native, and one of the things that, that I saw growing up, because I had friends who lived close to Horace Mann, was the old Alba site, okay? And, and for any of you who have been to the old Alba site, you know what that circumstance was like. This is a vote about opportunity, because these kids, who I've spent time with, since they've come into this community, have really begun to see the difference of having a place where people care about them, and it started before they even got there. We went out on a neighborhood walk, I'm with the North Park Community Association, we went out on a neighborhood walk, trustee Barrera and Richard Moore, the principal, several of his staff, came out and we walked the neighborhood, all along, going door-to-door to let people know the school's coming, to talk about ways to sort of manage the process and work together. This has been a new course, this has been an opportunity for the school district, and it continues today. You can vote to support this opportunity, and show that if there's a, a meeting that needs to be noticed, you can work with the community, which is exactly what happened here, and we were able to determine that everybody got noticed, because I personally went door-to-door in the service area to make sure everybody got noticed, and Bernie Reinderson's staff was careful to make sure to provide that information and, and put it out, not just in English, but in Spanish, where we have 40% Latino in our community. So it's, as you consider this opportunity, to improve the circumstances for these kids, to improve the park, and to look at the legal requirements, and all of the other decisions that you have to make, I implore you to please bear in mind, that this, this is an opportunity to reach across, it's not just school district, I'm just a guy, I don't have kids, I don't have, I sit on the site school council because I live in the neighborhood, and there are lots of people like me who just live in the neighborhood and want a better place. And so with this opportunity, I really hope that you'll take this chance and vote to approve this money and help us move on our way. This, the, as the community association, we will go forward after this, if this is approved, and ask the City of San Diego Redevelopment Agency for additional resources to continue this process, so that it's not just the school district. So I thank you very much and appreciate the time.
Question.
We've got another's.
Oh, we do.
Do you want to ask Omar a question?
No.
Okay, Mike Forbes.
Good afternoon, my name is Mike Forbes, I own the property that runs from 4366 through 4372 Iowa Street. I appeared before you today to petition the school board to fully fund my community's request for improvements to the joint use facilities we share with the Alba school. Politics is the just inequitable distribution of power, so I'd like to examine for a moment what is fair with regards to the location of Alba in North Park. I'm a businessman, I use numbers, so I'm going to use some now to show why, and the principle of fairness. The board should approve full funding. Alba's presence affects property values, and I want to proceed slowly here so we don't have any misunderstanding. We all love children, and I'm personally grateful that, I live in a community where we give kids a second chance, and I'm happy to have Alba in the area in which I live. However, there's no getting around the fact that I'm. However, there's no getting around the fact that its presence affects property values. I work in real estate, so I know. I was part of an effort to notice and inform residents for two blocks on either side of the Alba school. Members of San Diego Unified helped us in that effort. I feel that this was a reasonable assessment of the zone affected. There were 600 houses within that zone. If each house lost 1% of a $400,000 value, that's a total effect of $2.4 million in lost property values for North Park. San Diego Unified saved $6 million by choosing this location. The largest number I've seen for Alba joint use improvements is $630,000. That represents 10% of the money saved by San Diego Unified choosing this location. It represents 25% of the money North Park residents lost in property values. If you don't like the 1% lost value in property, cut it in half, and if you don't like that, cut it in half again, in which case, all we're asking for is what we lost, what we lost. So in the interest of reciprocity, in the interest of fairness, I ask you to approve joint use improvements in full. Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm fine actually, I found what I needed, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I just wanna say that this seems to me, the whole process of opening the school and what's happened since is, is an example of what we need to be doing in San Diego in terms of our schools being neighbor, good neighbors and part of the neighborhoods in which they are, and this is, I just appreciate the effort everybody's made.
Okay, item HO3, we will hear at 5 o'clock. That's for, item HO4.
Move approval. Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
It takes four votes, yes. Okay.
Okay, on to the superintendent's consent agenda.
Move approval of the superintendent consent agenda.
Second.
Any speakers?
We have no speakers, I think. And no board members wish to pull any items?
You looking at me?
Okay, well, we've got a motion, a second to approve, to approve the entire consent agenda.
Tent to approve.
All in favor?
All in favor. All in favor. All right.
Okay, great.
I lost my mic.
So we got until...
All right, we're at 4:45, we're back at 4:45 at the presentation.
Losing one binder.
4:45?
No.
You have one individual that just signed up on non-agenda, would you like to hear that person now?
Oh, sure, yeah, we have a non-agenda item, please, yeah. All right.
Chris Kelly.
Chris Kelly, okay. Chris Kelly.
No, Chris Kelly?
No, I'm here.
Here comes a person.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, good afternoon, my name's Chris Kelly, and I'm a sixth grade teacher at Pershing Element, Pershing Middle School. If you're not familiar with the school, it's located in La Mesa on the border, it gets extremely hot for the first part of the school year, and I've been hearing...
It's not, it's, we don't represent La Mesa, so you don't wanna say that.
It's not La Mesa, but it's on the border.
It's not La Mesa, but it's very close, yes.
Very close, it's East County for our school district.
I just, I wanted them to make sure that you were kosher.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know that for the first month of the school year, it, it is very warm, a lot of teachers get there and siphon in the cool air, close their doors up to keep the rooms cool for the majority of the day. This year, our sixth grade classrooms received some Prop S funds, and we, we were able to obtain a lot of great technology that our sixth grade students have been using for mathematics, and each one of my students has a laptop that they're able to use during the day. We have a Promethium board, it enables math teachers and other teachers to get immediate feedback on what kids are learning, what they're not learning. This is my 15th year in the district, and it's been amazing. The, the students who, the immediate feedback has been amazing, and the, the kids are much more on task than they've ever been, they love the technology, and I just wanna put a little plug in your ears that if it comes down to air conditioning versus technology, although I'd love to have air conditioning, the technology this year has been simply amazing. And as a teacher, to get feedback immediately on what my kids are able to do and what they're not able to do has made my teaching that much stronger. And being 42 years old as well, my kids, who I brought with me today, are the future. They love technology, they're into it, they have things programmed in their little brains that I don't have, so I'm learning things as we go along, but I just would like for you to seriously consider when you go to look at the Prop S funding, that you would consider the technology aspect of that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 4:45.
4:45. I didn't pull a one.
Surprise, I got 128.3 I can agree to. But that's me too, the one.
Okay, everybody, welcome back. All right, we're going to begin with our student presentation. Dr. Evans.
Thank you very much. Before we begin talking about budget and all of these other issues, we're going to have a presentation from our students. These students are from Sandberg Elementary in Miramesa. Sandberg Tigers, right? There are the T-shirts, the Sandberg Tigers. And I had the privilege of being out there on a Friday morning a few months back, and I was very impressed that the kids were out running around the field, and there was a group of Marines that was also out there working out with them. And I found out that on a regular basis, every week, they go on Friday mornings and volunteer, put in their time, work with the kids, really inspire them. I heard stories about kids that got really excited about school because of their involvement with the Marines. And we want to have more community involvement. The Marines are definitely part of our community, so I was really happy to see that. So I'll let the principal, Lori Heinzman, excuse me, Lori Heinzman, introduce the group and tell us what's going on.
Hi, I'm Lori Heinzman, Principal of Sandberg, and these are our wonderful fifth graders and our fabulous Marines. I want to thank the board for inviting us here today, and Superintendent Kova, thank you very much. We, every Friday, the Marines, for 14 years, the Marines have come to Sandberg. They are an official partner of Sandberg. They're MCAAs at Miramar. And they come every Friday, they do PT with the fifth graders, and then afterwards, we have a mentorship program where we have the Marines work with special students or students who need a big sister or a big brother. And so it's quite a great program. So they are going to do, we have a short clip to show you, and then be ready, because they're going to put everybody to work.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for inviting us. My name is Staff Sergeant Magic Wilder. Most of the kids call me either Staff Sergeant Magic or just Magic. These are my fabulous Marines here. They help me out on a regular basis. We are definitely thankful for you guys to take the time to see what we do. So we're going to give you a small... Do I need that? Am I not loud enough? Again, ladies and gentlemen, I apologize. Okay, and it is on. Okay, we're going to go through a quick, short presentation of a brief amount of exercises that we do. It's just a small portion of what we do every Friday over here at Sandberg Elementary. And forgive us if we are a little too loud.
Good afternoon, Sandberg Elementary.
Woo, bro!
My name is Corporal Kenny. Your first exercise will be jumping jacks. Starting positions. Ready? Exercise. One, two, three.
One!
One, two, three.
Two!
One, two, three.
Three!
This is what you ask.
Four!
One, two, three.
Five!
One, two, three.
Six!
One, two, three.
Seven!
One, two, three.
Eight!
One, two, three.
Nine!
This is your last. One, two. Good afternoon, Sandberg.
Woo, bro!
I am Corporal Mayfield, I will be leading your next period of exercise. The next one will be cherry pickers. Starting positions. Ready? Exercise. One, two, three.
One!
One, two, three.
Two!
One, two, three.
Three!
One, two, three.
Four!
One, two, three.
Five!
One, two, three.
Six!
One, two, three.
Seven!
One, two, three.
Eight!
One, two, three.
Nine!
One, two, three.
Ten!
Good afternoon, Sandberg.
Woo, bro!
Oh, come on, that wasn't loud enough. Good afternoon, Sandberg.
Woo, bro!
My name is Sergeant Lamb, I will be leading you in your next conditioning exercise, which will be steam engines. Ready positions. Ready? Exercise. One, two, three.
One!
One, two, three.
Two!
One, two, three.
Three!
One, two, three.
Four!
One, two, three.
Five!
One, two, three.
Six!
One, two, three.
Ten!
One, two, three.
Eight!
One, two, three.
Nine!
One, two, three.
Ten!
Good afternoon, Sandberg.
Woo, bro!
I am Lance Fortpalence, and I will be leading your next period of instruction. We're going to be doing lunges. Ready? Begin. One, two, three.
One!
One, two, three.
Two!
One, two, three.
Three!
One, two, three.
Four!
One, two, three.
Five!
One, two, three.
Six!
One, two, three.
Seven!
One, two, three.
Eight!
One, two, three.
Nine!
One, two, three.
Ten!
Good afternoon, Sandberg.
Woo, bro!
My name is Sergeant Villarreal, I will be leading your next conditioning exercise. Next exercise will be mountain climbers. All together, exercise.
One, two, three. One!
One, two, three.
Two!
One, two, three.
Three!
This is what you ask.
Four!
One, two, three.
Five!
One, two, three.
Six!
One, two, three.
Seven!
One, two, three.
Eight!
One, two, three.
Nine!
One, two, three.
Ten!
Good afternoon, Sandberg.
Woo, bro!
Now, you can be loud with that. Good afternoon, Sandberg.
Woo, bro!
Your last and final exercise will be Marine Corps push-ups. You've got to be loud. Push up, Marine Corps! Nope, not loud enough. Push up, Marine Corps! Almost there. Push up, Marine Corps! All together, exercise. One, two, three.
One!
One, two, three.
Two!
One, two, three.
Three!
One, two, three.
Four!
One, two, three.
Five!
One, two, three.
Six!
One, two, three.
Seven!
One, two, three.
Eight!
One, two... Everyone up! Everyone up! That's nine. One, two, three.
Ten!
Hi, my name is Ali Rodriguez, and I'm here today...
Take you back to the south.
...to thank the Marines for everything they do for us. This is my friend Carly. I just want to give a big thank you to our Marines for coming out every Friday morning to do PT with Sandberg. I think it's so cool to do PT, because it gets us ready for our studies and tests. And I'm so thankful for everything... I'm so thankful for the Marines, because they help us every week to become more active, physically fit, and it's so very fun. Thank you for inviting us, board members, here today. Now I'd like to introduce Staff Sergeant Magic.
Ladies and gentlemen, as she said, it's a great privilege for us, the Marines, to come out and help the community in any way we can. We always want to paint a positive picture for the Marine Corps, what the Marine Corps does for the country. A lot of times, people focus on the negative, we always focus on the positive. And children are very positive. And it's our privilege to come out every week, because honestly, it's the best feeling for me. It's almost, I compare it to being like a celebrity or a rock star when I show up over there. It's amazing the reception we get, the receptivity, the reception that we get from them, and how receptive they are to us. And someone who wants to emulate us, it's an awesome experience. And I thank you all for raising such wonderful children and being active parents. Thank you.
I just want to thank the students and the Marines all for coming here and sharing with us, and also to the principal, Ms. Heinzman. I also wanted to point out that a good school requires good leadership, and we just found out that the Association of California School Administrators, Region 18, has named Ms. Heinzman as Elementary Administrator of the Year. So congratulations. I'm sure what helps her is all that physical training, and she gets out there on Friday mornings.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Evans.
Nightmares, Dr. Evans. I gotta say, Dr. Evans' nightmares.
Bringing back some nightmares for his Jacksons.
Twenty years.
She's Cheddar Island. That's a nightmare.
All right, if we don't get to a balanced budget tonight, Admiral Kova is going to run us as a board around the Ed Center until we... Okay, so we are... Resuming our budget discussion, and our goal tonight is, we know that we've got a preliminary report that we need to submit to the county by March 15th. We will make final decisions on what goes into that preliminary report at our meeting on March 9th. But tonight, it's our responsibility to make as clear decisions as we can, to give staff direction in terms of where we're going for that March 15th report. We have a number of speakers tonight, and we're going to limit public speaking to one minute, and I apologize for that, but we'll never get through this if we don't do that. So I'm going to begin by calling people up. Mary Larson. Mary Laupa. Angela Swift. Serena Revorevo. Carolyn Cartarete. Sophie Braheney. Jill Pearlman.
I'm Mary Larson, and 7555 Phoenix Drive in La Mesa. I'm a teacher at Hardy Elementary School. Due to the one-minute constraint, I'm just going to shorten this a little bit and just go to my end, okay? I'm still in the philosophy that the way to capture lifelong learners is to make learning enjoyable. Believe it or not, I've never heard a student rejoice over scoring proficient or advanced on a district benchmark test. It's my hope that we can keep the joy in education for teachers and students alike. Today, I stand before you with my colleagues, feeling much like Shel Silverstein's giving tree. Our fruit is long gone, our branches have fallen, excuse me, our leaves have fallen, our branches are soon to be sawn off. So we're left to feel like nothing more than an old stump with not much left to give. But as the fall approaches, we'll say to our students, "Come, children, come to our classrooms," and we'll teach you with our passion, because unfortunately, that may be all that we have left. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I'm Mary Laupa. I'm a National Board Certified Teacher/Librarian, and I'm here to tell you about what I do at Claremont High School and Kearney High School. I promote diversity, integration, and choice through presentations such as Band Book Week, where I discuss censorship, the First Amendment, to regular and special education classes. I provide a safe and supportive environment, especially during lunch. Ask any librarian, the library is Switzerland, no bullying allowed. I have a Master's in Library and Information Science, and that means the research process. I work with classes and individual students using the district databases, not taking citations, avoiding plagiarism, the big six research process, and I improve literacy with programs such as the California Young Reader Medal, Reading is Fundamental, and Read Across America. I'd be happy to tell you what I do at Kearney, but I'm in a split assignment, so you'll have to wait until next week.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Angela Swift, and I'm a teacher at the Student Learning Center. The Student Learning Center is a wonderful program, and I would like to commend San Diego Unified School District for providing such a program for special education students who have not learned to read in the regular program, in their special ed program at school. They're referred to us, they are transported to us five days a week for two hours a day for intensive sequential research-based reading program, and we see results. They improve, and we're able to send them back to their school where they can now access the curriculum. And since I have this time constraint, I don't know if you know children that can't read, but many of my students, and my own son, couldn't be like this child here who read from their paper. And all of our children deserve that, and we have the talent and the skill to teach them. And we just ask that you continue to fund the program. We know it's expensive, but the kids are definitely worth it. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Serena Revoreto, and I'm also a teacher at the Student Learning Center. I'm here for two reasons. The first reason is I support students learning how to read, and the second reason is I want to point out all of the extra financial fees in attorneys and advocate fees that the district might face if they cut our program. I've been doing research, and private learning centers, if you were to provide two-hour-a-day service five days a week at a private learning center, it would cost one child about $30,000 a year. Times that by 100, which is what we usually serve from beginning to end each year, and that would be $3 million. And it's my understanding that, at the last board PowerPoint that you guys put out, that it was $2.5 million that the learning center was going to cost to keep it running. But my fees don't even include transportation and the legal costs that will be added on top of those private learning center fees. So my hope, since I have a time constraint, is that the district will save this vital, necessary program, because I'll leave you with one example. I have a student... Oh, sorry. Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Carteret, and I'm the coordinator of the Student Learning Centers. And I'm going to describe to you the type of student that we serve. The students that come to the Learning Center are students who are identified as special education students. It is not a first stop for those students. These are students who have had years and years of intervention at our schools in San Diego Unified, and they have not been successful learning to read. And as we go through the years and peeling away the layers of SAI services that are available to kids, the hard-working professionals at the sites are the ones coming to us and asking for our help, because the services that are available are just not enough for a small population of students that are not able to continue learning with what's available at the site. These are students who have average to above-average, some gate, some seminar kids that have attended our program and are not learning to read. Students are at least two years below grade level. It's not unusual for kids coming in to be four, five, six. I have eighth graders that are reading at a pre-primer level.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Sophie Braheney. I am a certified teacher and case manager at the Learning Center at Troyus Mead School. The Student Learning Center service serves the most disenfranchised students. They are the students who are already disproportionately performing far below their peers, and whose families have the least economic advantages. Despite years of special education intervention, these students have not been taught to read. What price do we pay for not teaching our children to read? The Human Relations Committee of San Diego recently stated this price as follows. "Enlarging the pool of undereducated, unemployed, and frustrated youth in our community increases crime, gang violence, and drug abuse." We understand that cuts have to be made, but if you decide to cut us, the Learning Center, again, as we've been cut many times in the past, please cut the software, not the staff. Software cannot consult with other professionals, call home, or listen to a child who needs to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm Jill Pearlman at the Learning Center at Troyus Mead. And I want to give you a little background again on some of our students and some of the results that we see. Currently, the three Learning Centers serve students in grades two through 11th, with most of our students in grades third through eighth. Of our current students, 84% are of color, and 58% are English-language learners. On average, a Learning Center student enters reading at the first grade level. Many of our students read below the first, and some come a bit over. But thinking since we serve students in grades second through 11th, this means that on average, our incoming fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are trying to survive in their classrooms while reading below the first grade level. On average, Learning Center students gain two and a half years of reading growth, so after years and years of failed attempts at learning, they have finally become independent readers. They are then able to be at their school for their full day with support and continue to make progress. And most of our students are with us for one to two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll call Dr. Richard Chaffoo, Norma Trost, Candy Nieto, Barbara Pongshakol, Antonia Gutierrez, Amina Mohammed.
He who snoozes loses. Norma Trost, San Diego Kiwanis. Thank you for having the courage last year to put in one day of counseling time at every elementary school. Throughout the 30-year history of the Kiwanis Club Partnership with the Counseling and Guidance Department, we've gone through many, many rough patches with school boards. It was a difficult decision, I know, for you to make last year. The formula is so important for our kids. We know, and we know, you know, that a comprehensive counseling program in elementary schools saves kids' lives. Thank you for the courage to continue it.
Thank you, Norma.
Dear school board members, my name is Amina Mohammed, a former refugee from Somalia. But before the time I arrived in this country, I did not know English nor had the privilege of attending an educational system. Although I was young, I was faced with many problems both at home and at school. Due to our culture, my mother believed that it was the teacher's job to educate me, but didn't know that she needed to get involved, and there needed to be a parent-teacher connection. I've noticed that in late 2005, my mother joined the training sessions provided by Mr. Bun Hong Camarat of the Parent Involvement Department, which she greatly benefited from. With the help of Mr. Bun Hong, my mother learned how to help me by checking my homework, providing a peaceful work area, taking me to a library, contacting my teachers, and getting involved in my school. I not only benefited, but so did many former refugees. My mother spread the good news, telling her friends, neighbors, and relatives about the advantages this program has. Now many Somalis are involved in their children's schools, and many of my peers have graduated from high school and are attending university. I understand that there needs to be budget cuts made in the San Diego City schools, but please keep in mind how vital this program and the Parent Center is in reducing dropout rates, increasing future global leaders, and getting parents involved in their children's schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amina.
Good evening. My name's Dr. Barbara Pongshakol, and I'm here with a group for community-based English tutoring called the CEBET Program. I've spoken before. I've talked before about the tutoring that we've done at the elementary schools, because we teach the adults English as a second language, and we tutored over 1,500 children last year. The paper that you're receiving right now shows that we also provide curriculum that help parents work at home with their children. In the first three months of this past fall semester, we had many increases according to parents in helping their children with homework, also tutoring, taking their children to a library. We teach them how to do parent-teacher conference, so they speak more with the teachers and staff at the school. And so they also reported talking a lot more with the child's teacher. So we see what it does with parents helping children at home and also tutoring at the elementary school sites, and we're just asking you to reduce our program. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Laurel Slater. I'm also a teacher in the CEBET Program, Community-Based English Tutoring. Imagine a kindergarten classroom at Rodriguez Elementary. There are 23 five- and six-year-olds, 21 of them are English-language learners. They are all beginning to learn to read, and they are what I call the "look at me" age, "listen to me." And they have one teacher who's trying to do that. But it's Thursday, and on that day, I walk in the door with 23 adults. And each adult sits down with a kindergarten child. The adult listens to that child read, helps them decode, then that adult student reads to the child. They read back and forth for 20 or 25 minutes. During that time, that kindergarten child has one adult just listening to them. That is a kindergarten teacher's dream. This is why, in times of very lean budgets, we need to maximize our use of volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Irina Sharal Filatova. I'm a CEBET instructor. What I like about the program is that our students not only benefit from improving their English and helping their own children with reading and homework, but also help children from their community by teaching them how to read and encouraging them to become lifelong readers. Studies show that the easiest way to increase literacy among preschool and school-age children is to simply read to them. Reading difficulties and illiteracy contribute to school failure, increasing absenteeism, school dropouts, juvenile delinquency, increased crime, teen pregnancy, drug use, and other problems that impact our community, which eventually lead to enormous numbers of welfare and social security recipients. I'm proud to say that children of my CEBET students are very successful at school, because their parents know how to read to them as they apply reading strategies and techniques of looking at books together.
Thank you.
My name is Luz Tackett. I work with the Community-Based English Tutoring Program. The CEBET Program offers parents and community members the opportunity to receive English instruction and family literacy strategies weekly. In exchange, program participants pledge to provide personal English-language tutoring to K through 12-grade students. The CEBET Program has classes in 17 schools with an average... The CEBET Program has classes in seventeen schools with an average of twenty adult students, and almost all are tutoring in classrooms. Please consider reducing our program and not discontinue it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to make an announcement. We cannot accept any more speaker slips, so please, please keep coming if you're on the list, but no more new speaker slips.
Good evening. I will be interpreting for the next two ladies.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Rosa Aguilar. I'm a student from CEBET Program, and I'm here to say the program is very important to me and all my classmates. And...
And I ask that you please not close the program because...
Since I started studying, I've been able to help my child more in school. And I need, I need, I need to continue to learn and... to help them to be more for his future in school.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I missed the program.
It's a balance, you know, to CEBET.
Hi, my name is Maria Martinez. Please help me. I don't want the CEBET Program to be closed because it's very important... To aprender inglés para ayudar a nuestros hijos.
To learn English, to be able to help our children.
And de more comunicación con los maestros.
And to have better communication with the teachers.
Y agarrar mejor trabajo.
And to have, to be able to find better jobs.
And en el programa aprendí a tener más confianza y segura de mí.
And with the program, I was able to have more confidence and to be more sure of myself.
Porque antes ocupaba en teatro para las conferencias y ahorita puedo hablar.
Because I used to need an interpreter for all parent conferences, and now I'm able to communicate.
Eso es lo que es lo más importante del programa, que nos enseñen inglés a la salida adelante.
And that's the most important thing about the program, that they teach us English so that we can progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She was very nervous. This is intimidating for all of us. My name is Candy Nieto, and I am here again to speak on behalf of my parents and the families. I'll have a job if CEBET is discontinued. I love baseball, and the players are reporting for spring training, but this may be CEBET's last season. The program is in the bottom of the ninth with two outs, and the last hitter has two strikes. Over the months leading up to this point, you've heard from the players, town hall meetings, board meetings, letters written. You've heard from the, you've heard the numbers, parents tutoring children, and the facts of why this program is important to San Diego Unified School District. We even brought forward a solution, a pitch hitter, to reduce the program from eight schools to the full roster, from the full roster of seventeen. Now, we need the coaches, you, the board, to consider the pitch hitter. Each spring brings new optimism to the game of baseball of a winning season for all. I hope you see that reducing CEBET is a winning solution and not strike us out. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Okay, Antonia Gutierrez, Cindy Quinn, Emily Spillman, Edward Charles Kadot, Vivian Nguyen, Molly Williams, Julie Moore, and Stefan Wilson.
Hi, my name is Molly Williams, and I am a school counselor at Coverley and Sessions Elementary Schools. I wanted to share that last year at Coverley, we identified a particular third-grade student to participate in our early mental health initiative program, which is under the direct supervision of school counselors. He was struggling with his behavior in class as well as on the playground. After his first session with our guidance assistant in the activity room, he came out of the room and proclaimed to our principal, "This is the best day of my life." After twelve weeks in our program, this student showed a tremendous improvement. His behavior changed in class, and his teacher and peers noticed a significant positive change in his interactions with others. The student's mother also reported to us that, quote, "He actually cares about learning," which was evident in the classroom as his academic success began to improve. This is one of many success stories I have witnessed at my school sites and across the district, our school counselors who are seeing similar results. We want to ensure that we can provide these types of services to children at all of our schools. Through your support of changing those few words in Article thirteen point six, that hope will become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cindy Quinn. I'm a teacher at the Student Learning Center. Six years ago, my colleagues and I watched the district start four Learning Centers at their school sites to try and replicate the original Learning Center. They received extra credentialed teachers as well as assistants in order to provide the level of intensity necessary for it to work. The staff were trained in specialized programs such as LIPS, Visualizing-Verbalizing, Seeing-Stars, and Others. This program had some success the first year, but then the extra assistance and teachers were taken away. As this program was being cut to the level that could no longer replicate the Student Learning Center, the program was no longer being implemented. Some school sites have classrooms they refer to as Learning Center but are not using the same intensive programs that we deliver or the same one-on-one model of instruction. The district no longer offers trainings in these programs, so essentially, these classrooms consist of a teacher and an assistant attempting to provide support to a classroom of special education students. These schools continue to request support from our Student Learning Center because this model of instruction is not meeting all students' needs. I've also heard that they are saying now that they know how to put these Learning Center...
Hi, my name is Emily Spillman, and I'm a teacher at the Learning Center, and I've worked in this district since nineteen seventy-nine as a special education teacher. I've worked with every service delivery model that has come down through the years. You call it whatever it is, and I have done it. And in two thousand and one, I started working at the Student Learning Center. I learned there that students could make significant gains. Students with huge learning gaps were able to learn how to read. And from my experience there, I was able to believe in a program that really worked. I later went to be a site-based learning, a teacher at a site-based Learning Center, and I realized then that we were not able to meet the needs of the students, the type of student that we're talking about with significant learning gaps. The Learning Center provides... Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, board members. My name's Julie Moore, and I am a parent of a student at Longfellow Spanish Immersion Magnet School. I'm here tonight because we noticed on the list that you had, the staff had recommended charging for busing, and we're a little discouraged about it. We're trying to survey our parents to find out how that three-hundred-and-twenty-eight-dollar per rider charge will affect our school. However, we are ecstatic that busing has not been cut altogether, so we wanted to encourage you and the staff to keep working with the dedicated Magnet Schools to come up with the most economic way. We have a goal of keeping our full buses full so that our students can keep coming to our unique program. We have had students writing letters to Sacramento, some in Spanish and some in English, but since I'm not a Spanish speaker, I wanted to read you some in English. "With the busing, no students can make it to school. With no students, the school could shut down. Our school's special. We learn in Spanish. That means it's double the work and double the challenge. I love to learn. We need education to help us to go to college and lead better lives and better futures." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stefan Wilson. I'm a parent, and I'm also here on behalf of the Ballard Parents Center. Real quick, I'd just like to say that the Ballard Parents Center comes to college neighborhood councils every two weeks. As a parent, I've been there for the past couple of years. What I've learned there has been tremendous. It's relevant to African-American community in our district. I've often seen sometimes crowded rooms, which I normally do not see. I've seen parents get involved. It also provides childcare for the parents, so when they're there, their children can be also active in learning and play while the parents get quality information. Some of the things I've learned there have been about anger management issues, teaching how to learn my child's different learning styles, from reading techniques, and just a different array of speakers that come out. Also, I'd like to speak to you also on behalf of Overcoming Gangs Beyond. As a member of Overcoming Gangs Beyond, it has helped me tremendously because I deal with gang members who have graduated from your schools or not graduated, who I'm able to communicate with through the Ballard Parents and a lot of information that they need as young parents in the community. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Richard Chaffoo. My son is actually at the, one of the Learning Centers as a student. He was diagnosed with a complex learning disability that was not, he could not get the services at his general educational school. I'm really not here to speak for my son. Really, I'm here to speak as a parent. I think for all the children who are and have been students at the Learning Center across San Diego County, we all owe a huge debt of gratitude to the teachers who quietly go about the business of changing the lives of our future San Diegans. We all are kind of aware of what happens to those children who our education system fails. We see that there are faces in their street gangs and juvenile court system. We're all aware of the financial pressures facing the school board because we all face similar challenges. If we have to turn our backs on these students who most need our help, then where will they turn? The measure of a great society is how it treats its most needy and unfortunate. Perhaps Martin Luther King said it best, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that's the goal of true education." And so, it's my hope that the board will embody these eloquent principles of Martin Luther King in their decision to sustain the Learning Centers in San Diego County. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Vivian. My son's been in Adam Elementary for two years in a row. He got help from the school, but level two, still level two. Last December two thousand and eight, he got Learning Center helping him, so he got very good at it. He got reward from school, everything. So, it looks like, right now, if you guys cut it, I don't know what happened to my child. Before, he hated himself, he got trouble in school, everything. But now, he's so good in school, he's just independent himself. He got in the classroom, he do his work, chop, chop, chop. He's really good at it. So, I'm so happy for it. If right now, you guys cut it, I don't know what is going to happen to my kid in future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Edward Charles Kadot.
Hi. Hello. Nice to meet you. I'm Richard. All right. Bring him around. Speaking, Tom. Minute? Yes. My name is Chuck Kadot, as I'm normally called in the native community. I am the dance instructor for the Soren Eagles Dance Program that we have at the Ballard Center. I am an enrolled member of the Lakota Nation in North Dakota, and what we do here for the, at the Ballard Center is, we have this dance program for our children, and we, we teach them the traditional dances that nowhere else in the county has this program. And we really appreciate this Ballard Center being open. And our, our program is to teach the children the traditional values, the cultural diversity that our program provides for us. And the Ballard Center provides this opportunity for us to gather as a native community, and so we're all one big family there, and we really appreciate the Ballard Center being available for us. I'd like to present to Mr. Barrera a gift of appreciation for our opportunity to be there at the Ballard Center for his continued support and the board's for our program. Along with Vicky Gambala, who's the Indian Education Title VII Program, we'd like to present this, this gift of appreciation to Mr. Barrera.
I think we ought to get in line.
I think we can get out of here.
These are members of our, our dance class. We number around seventy, and we have some dancers that are outside performing some dances right now. Thank you.
When he bangs a gavel, the whole thing splits.
Yeah, let's, let's hope we don't have to use this too much.
We're cutting a bunch.
Watch yourself to back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, we've got Yasmin Bosin, Valentina Hernandez, Melissa Whipple, Dr. Pat Washington, Emma Gogins, and Olivia Lopez.
Okay. My name is Yasmin Bosin. I'm a single mother of a high school student, and you know me as a chair of DILAC also. I'm here to ask you not, to ask you to please remove the proposal to eliminate the valuable programs offered by the Parent Outreach and Engagement Department. You know that, that well, all have, all of us have to start from somewhere. Well, I, I am here today because I'm a better mother, advocate, and parent leader because I learned things by attending parent workshops for six years, and I hope I can continue doing it. There are leadership trainings and other events offered by the Parent Outreach Department. I thank the department because my life and the life of my child will never be the same, and, and is in the good way. Our life is focused on sending my child to college. As for me, I travel all over the district to help all the parents who are like me. And again, I learned how to do this because of Parent Outreach Support Center.
Thanks, thanks, Yasmin. Thank you.
My name is Emma Gogins. I am a grandparent, and I am here to represent or speak about the Ballard Parents Center. It is a very, very important, very important program for the grandparents. There are some things that is very educational to the grandparents and is very helpful, so we're just asking to, please, don't cut that program. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Emma.
Good evening. Pat Washington, forty-five hundred, forty-five thirty-seven Alamo Drive. I'm here to say that I know we're all abundantly aware that we have a multimillion-dollar budget deficit that we all have to address together, and yet it makes no sense to eliminate a budget-neutral program as a part of this budget process. So, I want to thank you as a board, particularly for your leadership in taking the Parent Outreach and Engagement Department out of the morgue and putting it on life support. However, let's continue to work together to ensure that we continue to have this quality, cohesive, professional, district-run program under the district. We cannot afford to outsource the district's responsibilities to parents and students and the community, and we cannot afford to give cherry-picked community organizations funds that belong to the entire district. So, thank you for what you've already done, and thank you for what I expect you to do.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, Valentina Hernandez, Melissa Whipple, Olivia Lopez, Avilia Herrera, Catherine Please come up. Yep.
Hello, my name is Cindy Parr, and I'm a physical and health impairments itinerary teacher as well as the coordinator for our brain injury service model we have in our district. I'm here on behalf of the Learning Center. The Learning Center is a very big part of our brain injury service model, which is nationally recognized. In our model, students who have been typically developing and then suffer a brain injury are discharged from our hospital program. With the Learning Center as an option, we are able to send the children... next service placement that they should have, most of the time at their home school. The Learning Center has been a very important part of this. We've done extensive training with the staff there, and the kids have had a lot of success.
Thank you.
Please read my email.
Thanks, thanks.
Good evening. My name is Katie Quinn. I am currently a senior at Point Loma High School. In elementary school, I was identified as a seminar student, but I really struggled with reading. When other kids were reading chapter books, I was still reading picture books. I never read for pleasure because reading was hard and slow for me. When I was in fourth grade, my mom got me involved in the Student Learning Center. After a year of attending the Student Learning Center, I was at grade level and able to keep up with my peers. Looking back, I know that I hadn't, if I hadn't had had the opportunity, I would have probably not been able to remain in the seminar program, though, throughout high school, because I wouldn't have been able to compete with my peers and keep up with the demanding requirements of my classes. I am a perfect example of the success from the Student Learning Center program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Catherine Lindsay, and I'm a grandparent. And I'm here representing the Ballard Center, and I take the parenting class, Ujima. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the Ballard Center. I have grandchildren that have learning disabilities, and through this class, I've learned to battle for them and to speak up and to defend them and make sure that they get the education so that they can be successful. And without programs like this, a lot of African Americans are intimidated by people with titles and positions. And with these people, you feel like you're on a level ground. They make you feel powerful. And my granddaughter asked me today, "Aren't you afraid to come here and speak?" And I said, "No, because I have people to back me to speak up for you." And I want them to be successful. I want them to go to college. I have one granddaughter that is in college, and I want all of them to succeed in life. And through people, through the Ballard Center and through the parenting class, I know I can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Yolanda Alsa, Sonia Cappuccino, Larissa Johnson, Chris Devine, David Page, Carolisa Morgan, Catalina Camacho, and Luz Maria Haragui. Okay. Stone Eastman, Francis Fiero, Elaine Sabetti, Marion Snell, Andrea Schmidt, and Camille
Good evening. Elaine Sabetti, on behalf of OTBS CSCA. I want to talk to you tonight about some of the effects of cutting all library technicians and teacher librarians. For one thing, it will effectively shut down all of our secondary school libraries. It will limit access to reading materials that are specifically aligned with our curriculum. It will impede research. Where do our students go to get free online access to our databases and to do their classwork and to print it out if they can't do it at school? It will eliminate the extra time that students have to study, to read, to play chess, to knit, or just enjoy the safe haven of the school library before and after school and during lunch. And this also will impact supervision elsewhere on campus. Closed libraries make it impossible to circulate textbooks. Some schools have 2,000 to 3,000 students using four, five, as many as 10 textbooks each. Never mind that we're putting off the adoption of many of these textbooks. We won't even have the staff to circulate and manage the textbooks we do have. No one to account for them, no one to repair them, no one to send them out to be rebound, no one to order more when we run short. In fact, no one to even let the district know when we are short. So how do we expect to meet the Williams mandates if we close secondary school libraries?
Thanks, thanks Lynn.
Francis Fiero, OTBS President. Here we go again. Every year, it happens again, and it's just getting deeper and deeper. Um, there's no words that can, you know, this is just very sad, very sad, that we have to do this to our people. Because we're the community people too. We have kids in school too. This is very sad. And I just want to read a little thing to you. California Ed Code Section 35021, "No district may abolish any of its classified positions and utilize volunteers as, as in lieu of classified employees." I want to remind you that we will be very diligent because you have cut us to the bone, and we're not gonna take it anymore.
Hi, my name's Dawn, and, um, I go to the Language Academy. I, I like speaking French. Please don't close down my school because I like my class and my classmates, and I like my teacher, like, the teachers that I had so far.
Thanks, Dawn.
Just quickly, because I have 10 seconds. As a bus rider, we support the idea of paying for busing. One of the few probably who do. However, I'd like to, you know, look at the numbers to see how many current riders would qualify for the free ride. Is it possible, I guess, that the gap is not equal to the difference that you're trying to make up? And is the change temporary or reversible? Will this, will you review this if our enrollment drops? And you can believe that we will be back if our enrollment drops. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jennifer.
I really didn't expect to speak tonight. We are trying to get our librarians here to tell you about some of the programs that we're offering because we're so pleased that you were able to open back up both the elementary school libraries and the secondary school libraries. And so of course, it was a terrible shock tonight to find on the cut list once again all 22 secondary school libraries. You can't get a bigger bang for your buck than a school librarian. One school librarian teaches every child in a school. And what's more, these people in split assignments are teaching every child, child in two schools. They're phenomenal and incredible, and they're out there killing themselves for these kids because they love the kids and they love their program. And libraries, they are the basis for learning.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Camille Harris, and I'm here in support of my fellow counselors. I'm a district counselor responsible for four schools, one of them which is on program improvement. Counselors support students academically, socially, and career. We oversee the student, student study team process, which are for students who are struggling academically and behaviorally, along with monitoring student attendance. I oversee, I also oversee as a school counselor the ME program, which is the Early Mental Health Initiative, PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Intervention Support, and the Crisis Team for Counseling. I have also supported, I supported and counseled students who have struggling with parent divorce, students who have wanted to, to be suicidal, and death in the family, and I also do CPS reporting. Counselors are trained to respond to these situations and offer support to our students. So I ask you to please reconsider and continue counseling services here in our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Andrea Schmidt, and this is Christopher Schmidt, who attends the Learning Center. My daughter Christina Emily Spillman will be speaking for me.
I'm the teacher that works at Choyas Mead Elementary Learning Center, and I work with Chris Schmidt. He's been attending since February 2009 and starting to show steady gains in academics. He has difficulty with auditory processing and visual processing, and with the strategies that we use at the Learning Center, he's able to make progress, and he's learning. He's starting to access the curriculum at his school site when he's at his school during that portion of the day. He's accessing the curriculum at the school, whereas he was not able to before. So, and in the words of Chris, when we asked him earlier, he said, "Kids like me need the Learning Center." So, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Joan O'Hara, Carlos Ramon, Sylvia Alvarez, Michelle Douglas, Ronnie Riveretto, and Chuck Ambers.
My name is Joan O'Hara, and I'm the Para-educator President. And I haven't been before you for about eight years, and you know, good grief Charlie Brown, it hasn't changed any. I don't realize, I want people to realize when you say one full-time equivalent position, that's at least two people, and sometimes two and a half. Our people work from three and a half hours less to at the most six or seven, and there's very few seven-hour positions. When you have, I counted up like 200, so I figured that's like almost 400 positions. When you cut the Learning Centers, I can't say more than what the teachers have said, but guess who else works at those Learning Centers? The Para-educators. When their Learning Centers go, where are the kids gonna go? How are they gonna meet their IEPs? How are, and the special ed, you have 75 vacancies? I can almost guarantee you, they're filled with substitutes. And when those vacancies go, those substitutes go, and those students will not get any help.
Thanks, Jen.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Ramon. I stood here last year talking to you guys about the Old Town Program. First, I want to say thank you. You guys do a lot of hard work, you make a lot of tough choices, and I can't imagine the abuse you take. You do a good job. Thank you. The classified employees of our program are highly motivated, educated, and passionate group of people who work for poverty-level wages and the satisfaction of seeing the look on kids' faces when they realize amazing things about their cultures and their identities. Powerful, powerful things go on in Old Town. Every day, they realize, "Oh, that's where my ancestors are from. That's the history." I get so worked up about this. If we're chopped down to a two-day program, impossible choices are made. Whose history are we going to teach? And then we get to RHR? When?
Alright, thanks Carlos.
My name's Ronnie Riveretto, and I'm here to, I'm here to support, and I have to say that I'm really proud of my wife Serena Riveretto and her colleagues at the Learning Center. These people, these teachers are here not because they're worried about a job, they're here because they want to serve an underrepresented, hugely underrepresented population of students who are not getting the opportunities and the services that are really needed for them like other students in the same district. When I was researching a little bit to speak today, I was looking up some of the programs, I went to your website, and I noticed that when you go to the website, this unified website, you see all this stuff about GATE and this and that, but you don't see anything about learning disabilities and students that, that need the help, you know? And they are vastly underrepresented. You know, when you see that there are programs like GATE that are getting tons of money and tons of stuff that are going for GATE, that's great, but give these kids with learning disabilities at least an opportunity to succeed, not just in school, but in society, and become productive members of society. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, my name is Michelle Douglas. As you have heard time and time again, the GATE and Seminar Program allow highly gifted children to reach their full potential. On Friday, I attended a meeting at my son's school, Marshall Middle School, and was informed that the district seized Marshall's GATE funds that were allocated for the current school year 2009, 2010 as part of the spending freeze. These funds, which amounted to more than $19,000, were to provide the funding for the entire school for the GATE program. The state provides funding of $35 per student identified as GATE and Seminar. Until this year, these funds were mandated to be used for this program. Although you are not legally required to use these funds for gifted and talented education programs, there is a moral issue here. As you continue to make tough choices with regards to 2010, 2011 budget, please pay close attention to Line 1 Spending Freeze on the spreadsheet provided from this meeting. That line includes the state funding for the GATE program. Thank you.
I'm Professor Chuck Ambers, and I own and operate an African Spanish, African Mexican, African American museum in Old Town Historical District. This is my third time in four years of coming. I was here last year asking you not to cut the fourth-grade programming. I was here four years ago to receive a certificate from your Race and Human Relations Department, Jean Shaheed, for what we do in Old Town. In addition to running and operating the museum, I run, I teach four college classes, two African, two African-American, and an African Spanish, African Mexican, African American class. My college students have the opportunity to select elective to be a part of that. In addition to that, I also have the Juvenile Hall students, student courts, who've gotten a little bit on the other side of the law because sometimes of the African-American and African-Mexican games bumping heads. And so the court has now sent them through the museum to make a correction on that. I'm asking you not to cut the program because these fourth graders do not have that opportunity, and they are just as culturally diverse and in need of it as a preventive measure not to get to the juvenile halls, not to get to the college without the program.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Sylvia Alvarez, Timothy Evans, Victor Santana, Benjamin Williams, Mickey Davenport, John Minto, Belinda Patrick, and George Hosang.
I'm the other Dr. Evans in the room. It has been said that educators and parents have but two lasting gifts to bestow upon our children. One is roots, the other is wings. It is my hope that that axe you have is not used to chop the fourth-grade program in Old Town. It is the roots of our past that provides the wings of our future. We'd love to have those fourth graders come in. My wife and I are volunteer docents there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Victor Santana. I'm representing Save Our Heritage Organization. I'm here to speak about the fourth-grade program in Old Town. The program teaches kids an ongoing lesson about a variety of things. The main one is, while never giving up, motivation, skills, curiosity, which by the way are on your mission statement, in case you realized that before. Curiosity, because most of the ancestors got to Old Town looking for something different. Motivation, because they never gave up, and skills, because they succeeded. Eventually, they became leaders, of course they did. They participated in community, and they were the tomorrow, which we are today. And today, the kids that will go through the fourth-grade program will be our tomorrow, and so on, and so on. If you cut the program, you give up on the kids. Our ancestors never gave up, so you shouldn't either. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. Thank you all for being here, because I know you guys got hard work-
on your mission statement in case you realized that before. Curiosity because most of the ancestors got to Old Town looking for something different. Motivation because they never gave up and skills because they succeeded. Eventually, they became leaders, of course they did. They participated in community and they were the tomorrow which we are today. And today, the kids that will go through the fourth-grade program will be our tomorrow and so on and so on. If you cut the program, you give up on the kids. Our ancestors never gave up, so you shouldn't either. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here because I know you guys got hard work to do, so I'm gonna be as quick as I possibly can be. My name is Benjamin Williams and I work for the Ocelle Program down there in Old Town and I also am a parent. And what I'm here to speak to you about is the opportunities that Old Town provides for these children that many of them will not get a chance to get anyplace else. There's approximately 15 different museums that we attend during our week down there in Old Town that, again, many of these children may never see living right here in San Diego. But also, they get the opportunity to learn that their ancestors, where they came from, their people contributed here to San Diego, not only to San Diego but to California, not only to California but to the entire United States. And we have to prepare these children so that they can lead and participate in our society. So, I know we're not gonna stop teaching math, science, and reading and I'm not trying to show them any disrespect, but we must teach these kids how they get along, how to get along with one another. They must understand that they all have made a difference here in San Diego and that if we want them to lead and participate, we must prepare them to lead and participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Belinda Baylin and I'm also from the Old Town Program. This week, our local news stations have been reporting on this controversial story about a party that was held off-campus by some students who attend UCSD. This university is known to be one of the finest learning institutions in California. This party was called the Compton Cookout and this was in honor of Black History Month. Well, what were the attendees encouraged to do? Well, they had to wear gold chains, ghetto clothes. The girls were encouraged to wear cheap hairweaves and to dumb down their talk. This is just one of many examples of why programs such as the Old Town Program need to be around. We need our children to learn how to accept others' differences and to respect and honor others' cultures. I know that you all have a very difficult decision to make and I feel for you, but to cut or limit what we do at these programs would be so harmful for our children and also for society as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mickey Davenport. I'm with the Ocelle Programs. I'd like for you to think, you know, we were asked, faced with the process of elimination altogether, or to offer a new model, we offered a new model, a two-day model, which was not our choice, which is still not our choice. But I'd ask you to think about this. Whose voice, whose history do you want us to eliminate? When we eliminate three days from our program, do you want us to eliminate the African-American story, the Native American, the Asian, the European, women, beliefs, other groups? When you vote to reduce us to a two-day program, if you should, go ahead and take it one step further. Put an asterisk beside which sub-ethnic groups we don't teach about. Their voices aren't heard. I presented you with some demographics. Each of our districts, each of your sub-districts and city schools are racially isolated. I presented that a couple of days and I pass that on to you. Look at that. Look at the work that other districts are struggling to do that we are already doing. Let's not cut it.
Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you, members of the board. What an odd place I find myself in seeing as how I'm a council member in the city of Santee. However, what brings me here tonight is the fact that I'm representing the San Diego State Educational Collaborative in City Heights. And I know that you know that a lot of great things have been going on. It started out with just a group of administrators and grew into an organization of community-based organizations and some very well-powered people. And last year, we got a grant from the School Crime Prevention, Community Violence Prevention Grant, and I understand we're in the first year of that. We're looking forward to four more years of it. However, that money looks to be taken away for other programs. We would like you to continue to allocate the money. We have people that are hired already for that project and we don't want to take their jobs away from them. Not only that, we want to make sure that the kids that are in this program get the opportunities they need to so they can go on to a higher education because we too want them to not be adult offenders. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name's George Hosang. My grandson, of whom I'm guardian, tends SCPA. About two weeks ago, after listening to you folks struggle with the same problem, I decided to try something on my own and I wrote a, what I call a zinger to a lot of our politicians, starting with the governor, quite a number of assembly members, state senators, federal senators, Republican, or federal representative, and copied the board, although I forgot Mr. Gob, I apologize, outlining in no uncertain terms what I saw the problem to be and suggesting in no uncertain terms also that the problem lay in the state providing more funds for all the school districts and/or obtaining funding from the federal government. Well, I want you to know that I got a canned response from the governor, the President of the United States, and Duncan Hunter, but none of the others replied and I want all our voters here to know that all our representatives in the political arena don't give a damn.
All right. Thanks.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, please, Mr.
Okay. One gentleman came forward from the City Heights piece.
Yeah.
And I don't know what line item that is.
Yeah, Mr. Minto.
It's in the freeze, the spending freeze.
Is it the freeze or is it the, I'm trying to figure out what the connection was or what he was speaking for us to do or not do.
Can I help you?
No, I wanna hear.
Well, I don't care who tells me if it's.
No, he's coming down. Okay.
Dorothy Zirkel with Price Charities and the City Heights Anti-Violence Task Force. Those funds were put into the general fund and it's on a freeze at this point in time. So, we're asking you to continue funding what those funds were.
They're not even our monies, right?
Correct. They were the state monies that were brought here for five-year.
Well, we made a freeze. I had this concern I expressed at that time that it didn't happen, but we have the same thing with GATE. We give out central money to schools in their budget, but then we froze it and so their activities were completely frozen. So, yeah, I understand. So, what you're talking against is the freeze.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I needed to know.
Correct. The freeze and then continue to use those funds under those directives.
That's our line item one with our stuff.
We're violating our violence, but what's the amount?
It's $433,000 at this point.
That's what I remembered.
Okay.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna move on now. So, each board member has taken a shot at figuring out how to balance our budget or get somewhere near there and I want to take a round and we're on the clock, three minutes. Give one round to board members to walk us through maybe the highlights of your potential solution and then we'll talk, we'll see where we've got consolidation.
They did it twice.
They've got, yeah, but if we want to each go through our solution first or you can pass, but yeah, Ms. Nakamura, you wanna go first?
Okay. On our cuts with what we've got, I'd like to indicate that I started with items one through 11. So, you know, on your sheets, you can just add my initials to all of those. I just made more of an assumption.
Yeah, we've actually, I'm sorry. We've got a composite.
So, what did you want to do? I'm misunderstanding the call of the question. I apologize.
That's inaccurate.
It's inaccurate.
Oh, it's, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Right. I'm saying it's inaccurate.
Okay.
And furthermore, as I look through, I'd sort of like to defend myself because I feel like my chin's hanging way out there. Nobody else actually balanced the budget. Mr. DeBec refused to participate. Ms. Jackson proposed some things that are not on the list and which were pie in the sky in my estimation.
They're not pie in the sky. They're actually.
Hold on. You can color it.
Well, I'm not gonna see any of them either. My idea is pie in the sky.
Well, but there, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson. I.
Just because the staff did not do them and that's the problem in this district. Just because it doesn't come from staff, it can't be done.
All right, folks, we're gonna go one at a time.
Yeah, let's not get all.
Well, let's weigh off each other.
But at any rate, so, but it's true though and I, and the two of you did negotiate in items that I don't have, so I've got all of, I've actually balanced the budget. And I just want to say that if Ms. Jackson's items come forward and there's more money there, that's fine. If we find a way not to participate at all, I'm more than happy to just not participate in all of this. But I've got some painful cuts listed on mine that really, I would rather not have said out loud, but if we have to balance the budget, you know, I would really want to balance the budget and if we have the ability to withdraw them through the negotiated items that Mr. Evans and Mr. Barrera feel that we can accomplish, which I did not have benefit of, I really didn't realize, we, because we can't put this on the second interim report. We can't put the negotiated items on the second interim report. And my call of the question was, my understanding of the question was that was what we were trying to get after. So, I've got some things on mine that I call the unthinkable's and for, you know, anyone that hears something that is really, it's out of character for me, believe me that it's out of character, if we get negotiations, negotiable items, if we get, you know, money from the state, if we figure out all sorts of other things, then, you know, I'm more than happy to withdraw. But at this point, my call of the question, I believe, was that we were gonna try and balance the budget for the second interim report, which cannot include negotiables. But, and Ms. Jackson, you're right. I apologize for the comment, but I felt like it was, you changed the rules, so, okay. All right. All right. So, those are my comments, but my theory of action with regard to all of these was trying simply to protect the classroom as much as I possibly could and yet try with the mission statement to follow it, but it was nigh on impossible. It is absolutely impossible and I'm not sure. Thank you. What is this updated version? Okay, so that's mine, but my theory of action was just trying to protect the classroom, but I just wanted to say that this is an extraordinarily awful horrendous experience and for those of us that have been this, through this for year after year after year, you know, I'm about as sick of it as you are, you know, but having been up to Sacramento, I can tell you the budget crisis is absolutely real. I don't know what more that I have to add, but that's my comments for my first round. I just.
Okay.
All right.
Ms. Jackson?
Okay. Well, really, we have compiled our information here and certainly if we go through the list and I don't know if we can add up the items that have four board members.
Don't you think that'd be, yeah.
To see how many, how much it is and then items that has three board members to see how much that is. But let me make comments about the items that I put on my list and first of all, we're all in this. There, I don't believe that we had to pick one area over another. And while I did do my budget work here, what I would also say is I firmly believe in, you know, rolling back the salaries. I don't want to have to lay anyone off. I don't want to have to close any programs and I think if we roll back the salaries, then we can restore them as money comes back. Now, I am aware of how devastating it is for some of our populations, including, you know, some of our middle and upper-paid staff members, but that is one way that will ensure that we keep all our programs intact. The two items that Mrs. Nakamura is referring to, I put, while we did put on our list about auditing some of our staff as far as eligibility medically, we have never in this district as of yet, and I'm aware of, done a medical billing audit. And we spend $156 million a year in medical billing, about $12 million a month. And I just lowballed this about, and they believe that if they did this audit of our medical billing, they could find maybe $5 million, probably more, but about $5 million. And I think that is money that we can look at. The other thing I added on the list was e-procurement. E-procurement means that we got public entity and so therefore our procurement is done electronically. I know that there's gonna be saying, "How did this company get selected?" Well, that would end that because we would put in our RFPs, we would put them in the system and it would come out with the best price. But by doing this, it opens it up to a lot of different people and so the cost of items may actually go down rather than being negotiated sometimes even after we have approved an item. That's, so those two together were $11 million and those are additional things that were not listed by the staff. But I do want to say that when we did this, we only marked things that were listed by the staff and again, I don't, I think that we had to look beyond our executive staff here, no offense to them. I know they work very hard and very diligently, but it's when someone asks you to maybe tell me yourself, you're not gonna necessarily do that, but people outside may see a little bit more than, you know, you do on the inside. Our primary focus here is to keep our schools and our classrooms intact. That is why we're here. And so my decisions for the items that I picked were based upon that, was keeping our classrooms and our schools intact. And I think that we probably should give this to someone to add up for us.
Okay. Mr. DeBec, do you want to?
Sure. The, having been through this a lot of times and also having to be given an assignment that I didn't agree with, I don't know whether or not I have, my, I call my point of view has been reflected in any of the budget documents, but I have gone through it all and I have, including all the bargainable items, I have a list that adds up to in excess of $181 million of things that are on the list that, you know, but I still have the question of backing off of. Those sheets, these sheets are useless.
I know, but I don't know what you, what we're.
I'm using this one. This is the line item stuff, okay? My point is that somebody asked me to make cuts. I'm gonna make cuts depend, just again, on basis on my priorities, not on a whole bunch of other people's priorities. For example, there's a line item here that basically the three vacant positions, but the, you know, I could agree to that, but the rest of it I can't. So, then you got, it's a line item. So, I'm gonna vote for the line item or am I gonna vote to take care of the three vacant positions? That's a no-brainer for me, but I'm not gonna be painted into a corner on a budget decision by a bunch of presumptions. I'm gonna, if I want to go line item by line item, I will. And I'll vote on them when the time comes. A good example is the spending freeze. I argued at the time of the spending freeze about things like grants and what would happen to grants where the money came from outside the district, but we froze them. For what? We didn't save any money. We just tied people up. So, then it's a line item. It's still here by God. It's got a $7 million item when I know that it's paralyzed programs that we already, that the money isn't even ours to freeze. Okay? So, do I, so do I have to say, "Yes, I agree to all the voluntary items" when these items are coerced out of people? No, I want to pick and choose parts of them. So, the process for me is if you want to put a line, something up to vote on, I'll vote on its merits. And I agree that we have a very difficult task, but I'm not gonna go be painted in a corner by making a decision when it's a synergistic decision that depends a great deal on salary concessions, a whole lot of other stuff that I think are the best solutions for the school district, you know? And I've been here longer than many of you and frankly, this is the worst situation I've ever faced, but it's also the worst process I've ever faced.
Hey, Dr. Evans?
Okay. These are obviously very painful cuts and I appreciate the passion of the people who've been speaking here tonight about the programs that they represent. Last year, we cut about $150 million out of our budget. We did that in large part without affecting the kids in the classroom. There's just no way to do that anymore. There's no way to sit up here and say, "We're gonna do things that do not have an effect on our kids in the classroom." So, I come back to the very basics. We want to do everything possible to not increase class sizes anymore than they already are. We want to make sure we have a secure, safe environment and we still want to have a full curriculum. And I do believe every board member has worked very hard on this. I think everybody has a little bit different point of view and that's the whole point, to present what our ideas are and then to work together and negotiate to come to a conclusion. We have part of our work started by some of the spending and hiring freezes that we have done that have already saved millions of dollars towards next year even though there are complications with that. But the whole issue here, we're gonna have to have shared sacrifice between teachers, parents, and also the kids are going to be affected. The way that I went about it in terms of my looking at where are we going to find the 79 million. $79 million was, first of all, starting off with the priority-based budget that was done very thoroughly, it could be done over a period of a few weeks by the staff, looking very carefully at impacts, not just looking at dollars. Those are not, they were not good suggestions, they were, there were some horrible things on there, but that was 21 million towards the 79 that we need to, that we need to do. The other issue is in terms of staff concessions, and this is very important, whether it's in furloughs or in health benefits and so forth. We have to have staff contributing, just as everybody else is contributing. Even then, it still leaves another about $40 million left beyond those horrible cuts and beyond concessions by the staff. And so I've had to add on even further to the list that we have. In terms of, just briefly, the school improvement officer alignment, which we talked about this morning, which was about $2.1 million, my suggestion is to move it up to $3.7 million, which is to reduce even further the number of resource teachers that we have at the central office level. So that's another 1.6 million. The staff had about 7.2 million, I believe, on the special ed programs. There's, it's very complicated with special ed programs, because we're talking about the issue of, what we want to do is maintain the same level we had this year. And, but the proposed, the way the numbers were down, we're going to increase 15 million more. So I'm basically saying, rather than going up 15 million increase, to only go up about 6 million. So that's where the $9 million comes from. Another issue here is the, the public has brought up about we have properties and funds, and we need to use them in a time of emergency. So part of it is to use part of the proceeds from the Mesa property sale for another 6 million. Another difficult one is charging transportation for students, and also charging for AP exams. And then, just to finish up, beyond that, it's still, does not, at that point, completely balance the budget, and so beyond that, there are another about 98 staff reductions that need to made, to be made to get it down to zero. So again, I just want to listen to the other people on the board, and for us to work together to come up to a solution that we can all agree on.
Okay, so I'll just briefly talk about some of the, highlight some of the line items that I've, that I've agreed to. On line 23, so if we're looking at the composite solutions, but I think the line items coincide with the, with the spreadsheet. I want to be very clear that what I'm talking about first and foremost is reducing the projected increase in special ed costs, special ed contribution from the general fund, not cutting special ed services that already exist. And, you know, we're still in it, we had a discussion about this this morning, there's still a lot of work that staff needs to do, but this year, staff projects that we're going to spend about $100 million in general fund contribution to special ed, and that includes $15 million of stimulus money. Staff's then projecting with the same or fewer students next year, that we would spend $115 million. And that, I can't get my head around, and I haven't heard, aside from about $6, $7 million increase in step and column, I've yet to hear an explanation for where that extra $8 or $9 million comes from. So where I begin with in this $9 million placeholder is starting by looking at, how much can we limit this projected increase from the general fund, not, not making cuts to special ed? I think on the composite sheet, there's, just very minor, it's got the, that I voted for the PSAT, elimination of the PSAT testing. I don't think I did that, but it's not, it's not one that has three votes anyway.
Why don't we work off the actual document?
Yeah, we will. Can I finish this? The, I think Dr. Evans' point is exactly right. We've got, in my mind, we've got three layers of solving this problem, and we really started with an $87 million problem. And the work of the staff and the priority-based budgeting process, and the work that's been happening since that process, has knocked down a good 40, 50 million of that. That 87 coming down to 40, 50 million primarily from reductions and consolidations in the central office. That's taken a huge chunk off of that 87 million problem. I think there's a second tier that is going to have to be concessions from every employee in the district, and I believe those are going to have to be negotiated concessions. And if we come back on, in a couple of weeks, on March 9th, and we haven't achieved those negotiated concessions, at that point, I'll take them off my list. Tonight, assuming that we will be able to get to about $20 million in negotiated concessions. And then below that, that leaves another, I think 15 or, well, by my numbers, about another $16 million that are going to have to come from reductions, FTE reductions in certificated staff. And the goal is to do those reductions in a way that does not increase class size, in a way that avoids as many pink slips as possible. But where we sit tonight, it's very likely that that's going to include pink slips and potentially layoffs of at least some certificated staff. That's where we're at. And so that, so that's where I start. So what I believe we should do, if it's possible, is if we could go to the, I'm sorry, knocked your mic. If we could go to the spreadsheet that Mr. DeBeck is talking about, but I think what we want to do is, in the composite, where we've got more than three board members saying they would be willing to make this reduction, I think we should try to highlight those.
Four or more?
Three or more. And take a minute and see where we're at after highlighting those. And if there's a board member that wants to take your name away from any of these reductions, you know, speak now. But unless, but, but we should go and see where we've got three or more agreements on line items.
Okay.
Well...
We want to take a five-minute...
Yeah.
You want to take a five or 10-minute break and let staff highlight where we've got three or more votes?
So you're looking off the what? This combination sheet? I'm not even...
Oh, she's not, but John hasn't, John, do you want to work with Cheryl to get your votes up there?
That's okay, you know what? If you've got two, ask me if I'm on board.
Okay.
If you've got, why don't we do it that way?
All right.
John's going to have to work.
Yeah.
So who do we give this to for them to put it up?
Give which ones?
Just to put the name from the side in. I think they put the composite up. It should be, but, but so the public will know who's here.
You got me down for the spending freeze that I never agreed to, for the whole thing.
You should take your name off. Hey, I'm like...
Well, okay, good. This is bad, because I never put this in, and I objected to it at the time.
Okay, well, that's not... What I'm talking about, there's some here that have two, and if you're agreeable to it, you want to tell Cheryl.
I will when we get to the point of doing it here. Because there's some of them that I, you know...
It looks really bad, salty.
Really?
It hurts like...
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have to do it. That was one thing. But yeah, I want a blackberry, but it's really expensive. I think like two or three bucks is cheaper. It's like all blackberry. I'm asking. Okay, so between that.
They already were required by there, but we're doing the work. I just wanted to make sure I meant the full. So, you will have your final. It's got to be a question for teachers to change. And anything that's changed. Last time to... That was not the fault of the state of Louisiana, even if that's down. We find the local town and a couple of weeks back. So you guys aren't familiar with March 15th. March 15th. Okay.
Pardon me, dear. Sorry. Sorry. Get my purse.
What? Oh shit. You want us to talk to you or forget it? It's alright. You know, we make in the big mistake. I don't care.
I checked my horse. Yeah. Good job.
They're separated at least eight and two and five. Like the meat is separated at eight, and some of that two and then some of that five. And I thought like we just came to the two, but I wouldn't have to come to the two. Usually the meetings are like seven. But I know we saw.
No, yeah. We were supposed to be here. But then... That's why I asked you, I was like, are you going to stay? But I didn't think that. Did they say anything else? But they said that we'd be back to forty-five, right? And then they said, oh, because it's like now it's twenty-five. And I can put that to... Yeah, girl. I think we're at the end. Yeah, I think five is seven. At least we need to call.
Which schools you guys are from?
San Diego Math High School.
Okay. The Math?
Yes.
Okay. And you?
Crawford High School.
Okay. I taught at Crawford. The Math, I didn't. I know the principal pretty well. And you're then up at Mesa College?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, you don't know it, but they just proposed taking the money that we used, we're going to use for the Math. That's one of the decisions in there. Is to take the money that for that building?
Uh huh.
We sold the property. I agreed to the math because I, we were going to get the land and the building. What happened was they stole the money for the building where we kept the land. Then they sold the land. And now we got the money that we're getting for the land for the math is now going to solve our budget crisis. Uh huh. Yeah, well, see, you can't find that. I know it. But that doesn't matter. See, the problem is when I did the middle college concept, so I taught at Garfield years ago. Okay, Garfield, okay? And when they went downtown, they, what happened was we built Garfield on their site, on their, on City College's grounds.
Yeah.
And they let us have to build on it, okay? So we built it and we gave them some parking too. So then the deal was at that time, which everybody here doesn't know anything about.
We're going to reconvene in about two minutes.
President Barrera and Bill, I think we're ready to show you the sheet.
All right, why don't we go get started? So James, if you want to work us through.
Sure.
So Amy and I and Xandy were working on it with Debbie Foster. And if you, the sheet itself, A through E, we didn't really fuss with it a whole lot. So if you look at the new amount of proposed solutions, after you take all the cuts that you had at three or more vote, that's $60.7 million, correct?
Yes.
Sixty point, would you highlight the cell for me, Xandy? E-12, there you go. So what we did is we tallied all the items that had a three-person vote. And the votes are off to the right, and we can show you that. When you take that amount less than 79, that gets you to the $16 million balance. Xandy?
I didn't vote for.
Xandy, go back, please.
I didn't vote for.
Okay, so you see the yellow one that's 60.7?
Yeah.
Once the three votes have been tallied, three or more votes have been tallied, that equals essentially $60.7 million. That leaves a shortfall or a gap left of 18.4, okay? Now if you go over to the right, Xandy, you'll see the, thank you. You'll see the counts that were tallied, and those are column U, V, W, X, and Y. And the total count number is Z. So for instance, on the first line item, there was five, five people voted for that. Cheryl?
I never even turned in the document, so how could I have gotten a vote for?
Okay, so Mr. DeBec didn't vote for these. So Cheryl, we received a sheet from you. Please.
The sheet had two things on it. One, I wasn't going to. So then I didn't vote for any of them. Not at all.
So we'll have to make adjustments there for us. And. Yeah, keep going, Xandy, let's make sure we don't have anything for Mr. DeBec. I'm pretty sure we don't. Yep, okay, and we're clean. Thank you. So if you look at column AA, you'll see essentially the number I showed you that was highlighted in yellow, and that's the 60.7. And then every dollar amount down there on the, from column AA through row 18, those are the corresponding dollar values. So if you just kind of scroll down a little bit, Xandy, so they can see the sum total of those. I'm really looking at AA so they can get an idea that that sums to the 60.7. You put your subtotal on top, right? There you go, okay.
Ever get to vote if you, like now, if I agree with some of those, I can vote.
Well, I, I mean.
That's what bothers me. Why don't we just re-apply our vote and put down what each of the members vote for, instead of assuming that some paper we turned in that apparently is not accurate is on our votes?
Now, why don't we?
We have to be on record at a board meeting to vote on things anyway. And it can't be based on some piece of paper somebody turned in a day or two ago.
So why?
We should have a resolution that we vote on.
Why don't we begin by saying, if there's any column up, or any row up here, that we are on record as having voted for and do not wish to vote for, let's identify that. So why don't we start with that?
Excuse me, so, Xandy, you're going to need to show them the columns to the left so they remember which line item. So if you change your freeze frame? Yes, there you go. There you go, thank you.
Or anyone that you want to add, yeah, so, okay. So any, any changes that board members want to make, either to vote for it or to remove a vote for it? Okay, so did you hear that?
Two through 11, Xandy, that's an X for Mr. DeBec. Okay. Are there any changes to make, members of the board, for two through 11?
Add to your ending total. That would add because there were some items that it was only two people, and now you will have three, so that will add to your.
The formula will adjust automatically.
Very good.
Okay, Xandy, let's move, let's move downward. Mr. DeBec, any of these?
Well, yeah, I got my list. You want to go down my list? I wanted to tell you all of my votes.
Oops, Mrs. Nakamura needs us to go up.
But they're all pending on other things. But let's double check.
Mrs. Nakamura wants us to go back up, Xandy, there you go.
21, you can put me in on.
Okay, we're good.
So 1 through 11, we're.
21, add me.
So 21. Okay. Can you go down just a little bit again, Xandy?
Okay, now, all right, we're done.
Xandy, can you go down?
I'm sorry, I was asleep at the switch there for a second. Number five, I want to remove my vote from PSAT test.
Shouldn't have to go down to two.
Yeah, sounds better.
It should be on.
I didn't mean to vote.
Okay, we got that?
Okay, you got to 23 yet, no?
Coming to 23?
All right, there's a problem here, not there yet, right? Is that specialized programs services? Yeah, it is. Okay, here's, here's my problem. It's like you got me on down, or you, you put it down as like, it's yes or no, all or take nothing, you know? My take on this is, I can vote for the vacant positions. And the way I tallied it out, you've got it as a value of $7 million plus 7.3 if you want to round up. And I could okay at least 3.5 million of it, but I can't okay the whole package. So then how does that work?
Wait a minute, you had me down for number 23, and I didn't vote for number 23.
I know, they're not right, they're just assuming.
Well, if, Ms. Jackson, if we have the wrong X for you, please tell us that way.
You do have the wrong X for me, I didn't vote for number 23.
Okay, so Xandy, on, for Ms. Jackson, we need to take off 23.
I'm sorry, John.
I'm sorry, yeah, it's zero, Ms. Jackson. I'm sorry, yeah, it's zero, Ms. Jackson. Column V is yours and that's, there's nothing there for you.
Okay, very good, okay. I'm looking ahead, I'm sorry, I'm the one above.
So 23 has three votes.
So for me, I could, yeah, well, there's three votes, but you know, could you consider a fraction of the savings or not? Because I could put an X, a Y over there and say yes for a part of it but not X for all of it. So you got three votes, that doesn't mean they're right.
So President Barrera, what we could do is, once we get through the list, we can highlight this one in yellow.
Yeah.
And then if you give us a little bit more time, we could look at what Mr. DeBec's proposing and quickly calculate what it is.
Break the nine down between, yeah, okay.
So Xandy, could you highlight that for us so we can go back to it?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Okay, so the yellow, we've got to come back to, okay. Now we're at line 24, right after Special Ed. And you'll note on, column AA, for line 25B, we did make the adjustment of the 3.7.
Oh, can I just back up for, can I just back up for a second? Because in 20, line 23...
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I didn't vote for it, that is where the learning center is.
You're in 23?
No, no, I'm just saying, I didn't vote, I didn't support it. But line 24 is transportation and no one really supported that except for Catherine. And if people are not supporting, if they're supporting the learning center, those funds are lumped into, they are lumped into...
Take my name off of that, too.
Number 23. And so, is that correct, Joe? Is the learning center funds lumped into number 23?
No, that's okay.
They are.
In my defense, I didn't understand exactly what you guys were doing, so.
Try, try.
Okay.
23 and 24 go together.
Okay, but let's, but...
That's what I thought, I thought if you do 23...
Let's understand, or let me be clear, where, what I mean by the $9 million in 23, I do not currently include the learning centers in that. What I include in that is an assumption that we've already said this morning that the projected increase is going to be about $4 million less than we thought. So four of that $9 million is from our current estimate of what the reduction in the projected increase. There's other work that needs to be done to look at the, you know, the codes and a few different things that might also further reduce that increase. And then on top of that, then we'd be looking at things like the vacancies that Mr. DeBec talked about.
I got you. So what we need to pull out of here then for you, President Barrera, is the value item for the learning centers, we need to exclude out of this.
Yeah.
Got you.
Yeah.
Phil or Joe, do you have that number?
Yes.
Come on up, Joe, and we can just have Xandy do that.
But if you subtract that, that's right. I'm not going to accept subtracting that from the nine.
No, no.
Yeah, yeah.
What I want to do is make a note to the right and put 2.4 million as the value of the learning centers.
Yes.
Because I understand what you're saying about, you're only going to go up a certain amount on the general fund unrestricted contribution.
That's right.
Okay. So Xandy, off to the right for us on the 9 million, could you put 2.4 million as the value of the learning centers? We want to make sure that that amount is not included in our projections.
All right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Including the transportation piece?
Yeah, it was just line 24, yeah.
If, just clarify this one one more time, it's a $9 million placeholder.
Yes.
If the second interim validates 4 million and less spending, we're working for initiatives in the $5 million range that check the growth from 100 to 115.
Yes, that's right, yes.
Okay, now, so let's go to line 24 then. So what dollar value, Amy, do I need to put in line 24?
Line is, scroll to the left, you'll see the 200,000. Keep scrolling to the left, Xandy.
Yeah, but we're, I mean, do you have to vote for that if you vote for number 24?
No.
That's what I'm thinking and I, you know, I, if we're not eliminating the learning center, I don't want to vote for the transportation.
So really the transportation, the transportation's really tied to the learning center. We don't get rid of the learning center, we keep transportation?
Yes.
Okay, so then we don't put a value in that column, Xandy. So 24 to the far right? And Mrs. Nakamura says she's not voting, so that should be zero, so we're okay there? Because we've got a zero value in column AA and all the votes across are all none.
Yeah.
Okay, we've got that.
Could we, but this 25B, I, you know, that, Mr., or excuse me, Dr. Evans was the only one that voted for the 3,700 version of the events. I didn't, I'm voting for the 2,134. Yeah, 2.1 million, thank you, you know.
And that's where I still am as well.
Yeah.
Option B.
Option.
So option B, we have it as, Mr. DeBec, you voted for that?
Yep.
But only for 20, 2.1.
Okay, so put an X there. Now, they're going to...
Wait a minute, John, are you voting for the 2.1 or are you voting for the 3.7?
Well, I'm voting.
I'm...
Not you, I'm asking that, John.
Oh.
The 2.1, okay.
So I have Mrs. Nakamura, I think, Richard, I think, Mr. DeBec for 2.1.
And...
And then Ms. Jackson, what do you have, 2.1 or 3.7?
I said three.
Okay.
Oh, you said three.
Because the goal was to restructure the organization.
Yeah, option B.
Okay.
Let me just, um, yeah. Let me, could I just...
So option B is 2.134.
Could I just present, just very quickly to the board? We talked this morning about 2.1 was the savings. I pointed out that all the resource teachers there were about 2.4 million dollars and did we need all those resource teachers?
Right.
And could we do without them or do we need all of them? And what Ms. Jackson had said this morning was make some reduction in the resource teachers, which would be maybe like a one-third reduction or something, is if we went from 2.1 to 3 million. So I just want to ask the other board members if they're willing, I know Ms. Jackson is, if anyone else is willing to consider 3 million for that item.
Nope.
Nope.
No and a yes, okay.
3 million for that option, which is about a third of the resource.
Well, it's, it's, that would be 800,000 instead, out of the 2.4 million.
How are you going to decide where?
Yeah, I, I, right now, I'm a no. You know, I want to hear more of what that means, those 24 resource teachers.
What we said, well, all we really said was for them to go back and between the two departments, so not all just those two departments, but when they restructured the central office to be more effective and efficient, that it would be 3 million less than what it is right now. Rather than trying to put a specific FTE or whatever.
Right.
We just said, you know, go back and redo it and just trim it by 3 million.
Yeah, but we know specifically they're going to be looking at resource teachers and how are you going to allocate that and, you know, which schools get, you know, a science or math or, I mean, they all need this help in one form or another and it's not...
So it seems like, James, where we're probably at is five votes for 2.1.
Do you need to change that, Xandy?
And then if we want to...
Five vote votes.
It would be four votes.
It'd be...
For 2.1, for the, at least 2.1?
Hang on a second.
Well, and then for 3 million, it sounds like we have three votes.
Oh, we've got three votes for the 3 million, okay. Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's you and me, Richard.
So what we can do if you want is, what if I reflect the 2.1?
And then do another row.
And you see the amount?
Yeah.
And then what we can do between now and a couple days from now, maybe, we can go back and find out what three will do for you.
Well, why don't you just, you've got three votes right now, so why don't you just add a row for, you know, the difference between 3 million and 2.1, whatever that 800 something like.
Put in a line, additional SIO K-12 alignment reduction.
I'm going to editorialize it. Some folks have been talking a lot about wanting to improve math and science education. This is really how you get after it.
So Xandy, here, go ahead and make AD 3 million. Make it 3 million there so we don't mess up our formulas on inserting the row.
Okay.
It's 2.134 and that's what you have in the column now. So go to far right where you were and make it 3 million.
Okay.
Make that 3 million right there.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, thank you.
I don't agree, but let's go.
About 26, huh?
Yes, yes.
The others are part of the same decision, so you have to skip them. You can't have A, B, and C, we just don't B.
No, we're on, we're on 26, no, that's right, we're at 26.
Should be at 26.
Number 26.
Okay, put me down.
26, Mr. DeBec says, yes.
27?
Okay, this one, hourly, but there's no position.
Right.
So I'm not, I wasn't ready to vote on it until I knew what you're talking about.
Give me the microphone.
Well, that scared me. It doesn't, you know, I can shout or whisper, but either way, I think he heard me. The point is, I don't understand 25% in that hourly as what its impact is on anyone.
Right, let me ask.
Much less kids.
Sure. Are there any visiting teachers in this number?
There wouldn't be anything across the district. It could be teachers, it could be...
No, it's not visiting teachers.
No, because you said in here it's not teachers. Does not include summer school or visiting teachers.
That's what it is. That's to say, we, no, we, we...
Okay. So in this number, we excluded summer school and visiting teachers?
Well, yeah, but that, then who?
Who's included?
This is, who's included then? Who gets reduction?
There'd be, it'd be several different kinds of positions that get paid hourly.
Then wouldn't they be classified then?
Do you have a new duty? Yeah, it could be a laundry list of different positions.
Has to be a laundry list.
Okay, well, I'm not going to vote for it.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's clear.
I mean, if there's, Mr. DeBec, obviously, any ones that you want to look at, but I'm just thinking, where there are three votes, I don't know that we want to spend a lot of time talking through them if there's already three votes, but if you want to...
Well, I think the vote of every member of the board should be on record.
It is.
Yeah, absolutely. No, it isn't, not until I vote.
Okay.
Right.
So if you could just read off the numbers that you're voting for, that would speed
it up.
But that's not what you, the process you're going through. You want me to do that? I'll do it.
Okay, all right. The next one's 27?
No, but seven going through each one, you can just tell us the numbers. So we have a complete list.
Okay.
I just think everybody, if you want to change a vote on any line item, find it and just direct them to it rather than just going through each of these lines.
Yeah, 69, I want to take my vote off.
So on 69, we didn't have you as a vote.
You didn't have it there? Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, because we got an updated sheet from Cheryl.
You know, Cheryl, you're too efficient, you know that?
Can we go back up for Mr. DeBec to make sure he captured anything for him?
I don't know what the process is anymore. You want me to go down my list and vote yes on everything that I want to cut or not?
I want you to, I want you to identify where you want to cut. Tell them the line item and they'll put an X on there for you.
All right, well, these are all interchange, there's some that are half-qualified, so okay. So let's say here, I got an okay on 37 through 42.
So 37 through 42.
Okay. I don't like it, but I would go with an okay on 35. And 34. And 32. With regrets. Now we get to like, okay, here's one, landscaping services, number 30, okay?
Okay, can we go up?
I guess I call that yellow because I could support the vacant positions, but I can't support the rest. Okay, so then, you know, it's claims of 42, 500, I think it's around 300,000 that I'd support. That would be the three vacant positions. I can't imagine those guys getting that kind of money, but I'll, it's the way I figured this out, when I divided the five full-time things into 593, I got about 100 grand apiece and I sure don't think those guys make it. But whatever you put in, I guess I'll have to buy. So in that case of landscaping services, I would support a 300,000 dollar cut because they're vacant positions, but not the whole thing. We just got through restoring a lot of this stuff and I don't see any reason to...
Yeah, there's a portion of it's the 250,000 for a contract as well, it's not just employees.
Outsourcing?
Which contract is it?
From out of state.
Yeah. Insourcing, bringing it back in, so that's savings.
So I actually will support Mr. DeBec on that, so reduce it by the amount of actual current landscapers who, you know, would lose their jobs. So whatever that 583 is, include the reduction in the contract.
So let's do this. So let's go to number 30, Xandy, and go to the far right and let's make a note.
What contract would it be?
Like the ones that cut trees that our people got qualified to do jobs like that?
Come on up, Drew.
Weed abatement.
Weed abatement.
Okay, so we don't have weed abatement guys.
So, Xandy, on this one, the note is...
We'll bring it in-house.
Mr. Barrera, President Barrera and Mr. DeBec will support the weed abatement contract only.
And the vacancies.
And the vacant positions.
Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, then I'm there with that qualified.
Now, so for the other three then, does that change your vote?
I didn't vote for it.
I will, I would support that.
At all.
It sounds like it's about, maybe, I don't know what it is, 300,000 or something?
250,000.
I can do the weed abatement.
And whatever the vacant might be.
Okay, let me look at 46.
I can do the contract, but I can't support cutting positions.
I can only hear one person at a time, I'm sorry.
If it's two landscapers that we're looking to take off of there, what's the cost of two landscapers?
No, three are, three are vacant.
It's three or vacant.
I understand. So what we're saying is we're reducing the 583 by two landscapers.
All right, and then we're, we're cutting everything except the two landscapers.
Yeah, 104,000 for the two landscapers.
So take the 583 and subtract 104 and that's where we're at.
Good, okay. I support that.
What do we got? 5343?
189, or 489,000.
489.
Okay, I've got to go back a page to see, something doesn't work there, but to see, what was the number again?
I can support the weed abatement.
104.
Okay, yeah, but it's, it's item 30. Okay, it says three of the five full-time equivalents are vacant. So we're keeping two.
Yes.
Right.
So the savings would be the three.
Right.
We're keeping, we're keeping two minus the contract, the weed abatement contract, that's going, that's, we're bringing that in and we're going to have savings of about 250,000 dollars.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, however, let me say this, okay?
Ms. Datsun, no kidding.
I can agree with the weed abatement contract.
Okay.
But it has taken us a while to restore the landscaper.
Absolutely has.
And Mr. Kober can attest that I have gone to campuses and was not very happy, you know, with the conditions that our students go to school in. Now, what I don't, what I hear you saying is that we're going to terminate a contract and we're going to cut staff. We're bringing it in-house, but the reason you don't have those trees is because you froze them. Since we did a hiring freeze, they couldn't hire anyone.
Right.
That's the reason why it's still vacant. I know why it's still vacant, because people have been calling me about, when are you going to do this? And so I have a concern that what happens, if, when I go to a school, and this is just me, I went to a school and I didn't even know it was open because the outside, I looked so horrible, okay? We don't want to go back there. We worked very hard to make it so that if a child is going to one of our schools, they're walking into a clean, safe environment and they want to go there. If we make it so unpleasant looking on the outside, they don't want to go there, guess what, board members, they're not going to go. They're going to find other places to go. Okay, so, so I can agree with the weed abatement, but I can, I think we need to unfreeze those positions and hire those people so they can do the weed abatement. Otherwise, we're going to be back where we were.
So, President Barrera, let me just be clear on this. So, Xandy, if you go to the right a little bit, column, just please go to the right.
It's 250, it's about half.
So it's essentially, the value of this should be the 250,000 for the weed abatement contract that's going to be stopped, comes back in, so we have savings, and there are two vacant landscaper positions, yes or no?
There are three.
Three vacant.
There are three.
So three.
It's 100,000 for two, right?
Right.
Yeah, 52,000 apiece.
I'm sorry. We can do that.
How much is your contract for weed abatement?
240.
There currently is not a contract. We did not bring it forward.
Well, how much would it be?
150,000.
Then, why don't we, I agree with her, why don't we just hire people to do it?
That's how we get the savings, because we're going to have people that do the weed abatement.
Ourselves?
Yes. Drew, is that true?
I think that's the idea.
That's with the people that are already employed?
Correct.
So, what don't they do?
Running.
Well, okay, you're saying you're going to do the weed abatement in-house. So, then, the people that have been doing stuff that are, they have to give up the stuff they've been doing to do the weed abatement, or else they've been wasting their time a lot.
No, there will be a, from the normal routine, there will be a slight decline in that to accommodate weed abatement when we have to do it. What typically happens with weed abatement is in the, it's kind of in the back 40 of the district when we get, typically, we get a notice from the fire department that we need to knock the brush down. We also have in our...
That's the only time we do it, or we just wait until we get a complaint?
Exactly, exactly. That's what happens. When weeds get high and someone complains, and we have property that goes down slopes that kids walk through, then, then people call, the district can complain.
Hold on, let's, because we're not going to do this on every line item. Let's add back the two positions. I'll vote for that. We've got three votes. So, then, reduce that 498 by another...
Add back the two positions or add back the three positions?
Add back the three positions.
So, 52 times three.
So, what should be left is the 250.
So, okay.
Okay. Okay, next, let's, anything else? Let's start going.
No landscapes savings.
No, we're still at 250,000.
I don't care.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, go ahead, Zandy, finish that. Okay. So, the value is the 156. Let's go back, and so, I think we have three.
That's the savings. That's the savings.
It can't be. It's going to be 583 minus 250.
Five, the total minus 262,000.
You've got to officially rely on these people to figure things right.
So...
It doesn't gain you confidence, but...
39.
If you're keeping all the employees, not reducing any of the five?
Right.
Is that the decision?
And then, and then cutting...
Then, it would be 250 savings.
Right, we know that.
Okay.
But you said one something, they probably were confused, but it's 250. We understand that.
250 is the savings.
So, 104. So, 248, Zandy. Plus 104.
No, no, guys, guys, the total savings is the savings from the contract. That's all we're cutting. The savings from the contract.
So, 248 should be the number then?
Yes.
248 is fine.
Yes, yeah.
250.
Zandy, stop.
Okay.
No, guys, the total savings is 200, what's the value of the contract?
So, hang on a second. So, 8e, Zandy, you need to make zero, just delete that column. Just delete that. There you go, 248.
Okay.
All right.
Five positions.
All that's in there now, Mr. DeBeck, is the value of the contract. That's it.
So, see if John has any other...
Okay, any other changes that any board member wants to make to any line?
Not on that page.
On any page.
Okay.
Waiting for you.
We're down to...
38. Page three?
Yeah, 38.
We already went through 42.
You did?
Yeah.
No, we didn't.
He did that first, he went backwards.
Go down to line 43 and keep...
Yeah, but I said, okay, from 37 to 43, okay?
You already did that.
42.
42.
I'm not going to go for 43.
Only their right mind would, so, you know.
Now, we go to 44. Wait a minute, 44, I'm not going to agree to. 45, I'm not going to agree to. 46, it doesn't matter whether I agree or not. Okay, then, are we...
48, reduce travel.
Yeah, I agree to that.
Okay.
And 49, I agree.
At 49?
Eliminate lobby.
No comments.
And 50, I agree too. That's a big chunk. None of you do, but I do. Okay. Then, we go to 52. I agree to it. Doesn't matter, because I'm just speaking to myself. 53, I agree to.
Could you remove my vote off of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, add Mr. DeBeck and take away Mrs. Nakamura.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we now?
54.
I know.
That one, we never got the real stuff on because I'm willing to say, I would be willing to cut there, but I want to be able to select the departments rather than have a blanket 5% across the board, which is what we argued about earlier. So, that I put down 2.9 million, I say about half of the cuts, but I want to be able to pick or have the board pick those departments that are going to be cut to realize the 5%. So, it's not, you know, we were misunderstood when we said we wanted to cut in central office. Somebody made the assumption that it was a 5% across the board cut. The answer was, it's unrealistic. I agree, but it might be realistic to cut some of the central office departments to get 5% of the overhead cost.
So, 54?
So, that's why I'm saying, I don't have a yes on this. I don't have a no, because I don't think the question's been answered.
And I'm in the same position you are, Mr. DeBeck.
Okay, so, I'm going to move on.
Yeah, but I want to see...
Okay, so, that one, I can't, it doesn't appear to have much popularity anyway. A small high school, the answer is yes.
Oh, and Mr. Kober just very quickly...
The instance of the central office deeper, there were a number of lines where there were zero FTE. I'd like to go back and investigate those, those might be clean.
And then, come back to us, yeah, that's right. Yeah, thanks, thanks.
Well, that makes it a voluntary cut of something that's just an operational expense.
I'm going to see what it is.
Come back to us with...
But then, we need to look at whether or not there's central office departments that the board is interested in cutting.
Okay.
That means we need to see all the departments.
Okay, 56, Mr. DeBeck.
I did it in five, 56, no.
What did you say, in 55?
Yes, he said...
Yes, okay, sorry.
Yes, okay. 57, yes.
Don't you want to change your vote on 55?
And 58, yes.
Yeah, just added that one on.
You know, it's, we're forced into these right now. I mean, if you make it a forced choice, then I got to do it somehow. Okay, I'm down to 63, 63, and I say yes. Now, you got 64, and you got no cost at all in it.
I think...
And I got to say that I do not see a direct link.
What happened to...
No one voted, so it doesn't bring you the dollar.
Doesn't matter, huh? Okay. Well, I'm going to say it, because I'm here. I can't link professional development to student achievement. I can, I can link it to better performance in the classroom, maybe, if it's evaluated, like if you didn't go and you don't know the new techniques, maybe you ought to be evaluated for that, but I can't see that I just have to give a blanket yes to all professional development. From teachers that I've known, some of them think some of it's good and some of it's bad. But what you're saying is, you don't reduce it at all. That's the board's prerogative, but I don't agree. So, I'm going to leave that be.
Mr. DeBeck, Zandy, if you just scroll to the left for me, please?
The reason why we put zone is that it overlaps with the hourly, 25% in that hourly above. You could have simplicity if you put it on both of those.
Okay.
There's more to it than that, because there's cost for who does it, you know, gets paid and all that. So, I mean, that could be consultants, a whole lot of stuff. But, okay, I'll leave that be. I'm just saying, it's one of, not one of my favorite things that we should keep if we're going to cut programs for kids. We go down to small elementary schools and Catholic...
Wait, wait, 65, I'm a yes. I'm not up there.
Yeah, you are. 65, you're there.
But not on this chart.
Not on that chart? Oh, okay.
Well, I totally oppose that. I mean, you know, you're saying certain students, and then you're saying, what's the certain students? It's all the ones that don't have free and reduced lunch, but there's a whole lot of people that are above the level of free and reduced lunch that can't afford to send their kids to the programs. And then, what you're going to end up with, and I'll call you the consequences, will be charging transportation for certain students will mean some programs will be closed because they don't have enough kids going to them. So, you don't have the consequences of the thing, all you've got is the line item.
Right.
So, I'm saying, I'm not going to vote for something I don't know the consequences of, and so, that's why I'm not on that bandwagon, okay? All right? So, whatever you guys do, you do. I'm just me.
Okay.
All right, so, now, I'm at 70. Now, oh, wait, go back to 69. All right, 69, there's a question. See, I don't have a problem with not paying as long as the kids get the extra credit that they get to receive the weighted grade.
The weighted grade.
See, but so, what the problem is, is we're saying, you don't get a weighted grade unless you take the test, which means you got to pay. And then, we're only paying for poor kids free and reduced lunch, which is not the best margin for me, but maybe I'd have a means test, might be different than free and reduced lunch, but it's a convenient one, I understand, because that's the data we have. But, you know, you might find, very much like scholarships in college, that there are some people that are above free and reduced lunch that still qualify for student aid. So, I'm not sure that I'm on that bandwagon. But anyway, so, for my view is if I could vote for this whole cut, if we gave the weighted average to kids whether they took the test or not?
I agree with Mr. DeBeck. So, I'm going to put a yes on there and as a placeholder to do that analysis.
Right, and I understood, talking to high school principals, that there was a way to do that.
The staff's recommendation on that one, just to clarify, was that that would, that would be only if you changed your policy.
Well, that's what I mean. I'm going to change it.
Which now requires students to take it, not to pass it, but to take it. If you change that policy, then staff would recommend doing this, as you're saying.
But if they got a D, the weighted grade's not going to do them any good anyway, so, you know. But there were, by the way, there's some statistical evidence that some kids get Cs in AP and still pass the test, and they get a weighted grade. How do you wait a C? Okay, well, anyway.
Action is bring the policy back.
Yeah, bring the policy back, okay?
Zandy, could you note for us on the far right that the board wants it to look at the policy?
Number 70. I don't think my vote matters, but I honestly believe we could close small schools.
We're going to bring the policy back to the board members.
Okay.
I could vote to close small schools, but I think we need to have a better criteria for how we choose them.
Okay.
All right. So, I'll leave that be. Now, we get to alternatives from, and I did this work. This is stuff I did all my life, you know, or most of it, but I'm going to say that when I see the costs of the programs compared to the regular cost of schools, I'm going to have to say that I want to vote yes on 72 through 77. Because every single one of those is like 8,000, 7,000, 8,000. Those are, those are schools that cost more per pupil than twice the cost of a regular high school program.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm...
I know they're good for kids, good Lord, I did it. But I can't say that it's worth double the price. And if you want to scale it back in terms of cost to a normal cost, then I say, go for it. But my view is, it's excessive cost for what we get.
Okay, and number 73, please remove my vote.
Zandy, Mrs. Nakamura wants you to take off her vote for...
For 73, yeah.
73.
So, it does matter how we vote, huh? Because what you do, if somebody votes for it, then you withdraw your vote. See, that's exactly why I didn't like the trap we set.
That's why we're all voting, so, we've all done this.
I haven't done that consistently. I just, a couple of them, that that one, it's, you voted for stuff and put some stuff on that I didn't vote for at all, and so...
Catherine, I'm not blaming you. What I'm saying is, it does matter when you have a group vote together.
Absolutely does.
It absolutely does.
Right.
Completely.
Okay, can we scroll down, Zandy?
Keep going.
Okay, I don't know why I'm leading the parade, but anyway, okay, we go down to negotiables, and I'm yes on 78 through 80.
Did you say 78, Mr. DeBeck?
78 through 80.
Thank you.
I have other options that I prefer to implement, but if I'm forced to vote on these as a solution versus cutting a program for kids, I'm going to have to do it.
Mr. DeBeck, you missed number 77, I think, which is, you've spoken, I know, but...
No, 77, salary rollback.
Yeah, see, that was, my understanding is that that was something you...
The problem with this is, it's another trap.
Really?
It specifies, you know, I will vote for salary rollback, a general one, but not a graduated one. And this is a graduated one, isn't it?
Okay. Well, and actually, I have to say that I agree with that.
So, I say no on 77, I didn't vote for it, so that's why I did it.
Well, if we can, if we can add one in here, I think a 6% salary decrease is something I'd like to look at.
Well, that's somewhere, that's 73, 83.
That's 83? Yeah, so, 83.
So, let me just confirm, on row 77, we didn't change the votes, right? Ms. Jackson has voted yes, and Mrs. Nakamura, are you changing your vote to the 6%?
Yeah, from 77 to the 6% on number 83, and then I've also, because I didn't do any of these negotiable items.
Okay.
So, 83, 6%, and the 79, 81, 79, 80, 81. I need the original document. Ladies, may I borrow that?
78, oh, no.
Thank you, excuse me. They're getting an education up here just going over this, I got to tell you. Okay, so, yeah, 83, 81, 82, and 83.
81, 82, and 83 is a yes?
Yes, and 79 and 80 are yeses. And that's it.
So let me make sure we got, we have 79, 80, 81, and 82. Okay?
Okay, well, if you're back to me, 81 is a yes.
So 81 is a yes for Mr. DeBeck.
Okay.
Where are those dots at?
Okay, now, co-pay...
You have a sense of humor.
These are all stuff that, you know, yes, I got 81 and 82, I vote yes. 83, I don't like the percentage, but I vote yes.
Okay, 83 is a yes.
And then nothing else.
See...
82?
I said 81 and 82 I voted for, okay?
Yeah, I'm for that.
Well, then, they didn't get it, I guess.
Well, it seems like there were two.
I'm glad you joined, that makes three.
So 82 is a yes for you, Mr. Barrera?
Yeah.
Okay?
Wait, 82 is a yes for me, but it's actually for one year.
No, it isn't.
For six months?
He got it up there for six months.
No, no, no. That's the dollar value.
That means the savings are only for six months.
Yeah, the dollar value is only six months based on how we could implement this.
Because we don't fund...
I was yes for 82 as well.
This year, but we could make it permanent, and then it'd, because this would help with our structural deficit.
So Ms. Jackson is a yes on where?
Yeah, 82.
82.
But 82 was, well, 82 for one year was what we had talked about earlier.
No.
I know, but we wanted to do, I support raising the co-pay to $10, yeah.
But it needs to be, it needs to be one year, and the savings needs to be doubled.
Right.
Right, but the...
Yeah, double that.
Yeah, it has to do with when we could implement it, beginning in January.
July 1st, we're going to implement it.
No, you can't implement it, because remember, people have to opt in? Remember, they've got their open enrollment?
We were going to negotiate that.
Oh, all right.
So we're counting it.
Mr. Barrera, I can check with Sandra to find out if we would need six months or years.
I predict you can't.
The question, Sandra, is the six-months value, could we implement that beginning in July?
Let's move on.
Yeah, I think it's more, it's, time out, James. It's a Mark question, because it's really about whether we can get an agreement to do that by July 1st. Mark, do you want to weigh in?
No, I don't think we can.
I'm sorry, what's the...
What we want to do is vote for a cut, which would be one year, starting July 1st.
It's the $5 to $10 co-pay increase. Can we begin at July 1st, or do we, is our only option to begin at January 1st, 2011?
The option, assuming that it's negotiated, it's on, it's part of what's on the table now, the special enrollment, open enrollment period would have to be approved by the carriers. So we could ask, but we can't dictate the outcome, assuming we get a negotiated agreement to ask.
Right. That's what we're negotiating. So I would vote for it if it says 6% with, excuse me, wrong line, $5 to $10 for one year.
So I think on the table, though, President Barrera, it's ongoing. It's not for one year. So I think what I heard Dr. Evans say is, he would vote for it if it was for one year. Is that right?
We talked about July 1st implementation, so the full fiscal year, which would be double the savings. And that's in negotiations right now.
Right.
So that's what we're going for.
They just took you off?
So it needs, well, it needs to be...
Double.
What were you voting for?
Yeah, I'm voting for doubling it.
We're voting for doubling it.
Yeah.
So that's two votes.
Well, if we're going to double that...
I'm not going to do it.
It has to be negotiated, and so certainly, if we can do it by the 1st of July, that would be great, which is what our goal is.
Well, the furlough days also have to be negotiated. It's part of the negotiation pact.
All this stuff has to be negotiated, so we just vote for what we believe, not whether it's going to be negotiated or not.
I feel like I'm ordering off a Chinese menu.
Okay, well, so it's...
So what I'm hearing is that we want to show it as a 5-0 vote, but we need to double the value.
Right.
Sandy, did you hear that?
4-0.
I'm sorry, 4-0.
The 4-1.
All right, let's go back to the votes.
Doubling it, because I don't think it could happen.
4-0.
For what?
For 1.
All right, yeah, what's your...
So where are we at total?
I voted for a full year. Did you capture that?
Yeah.
Who didn't vote for a full year?
Well, I'm not voting for a year. I'm voting because I don't think it could be done, anyway, and I think that, on top of that, I think it's unilateral changes of an agreement that our employees have already agreed to when they signed on.
Okay.
So I won't vote for it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't me that was...
It's been bumped up to the full year.
Then you got to take out the 6 parentheses on 82.
Yep. So column C, Sandy.
So what's that give us?
Where each other gets that 6 month taken out.
In column C, let's make sure we change it now, so we don't leave that out.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we get our running totals, Andy, or...
Mr. DeBeck's not taking it.
I just, AA is the running total, 63.2.
Okay, so now, we have, wait a minute. You got the 6% salary rollback, you got to put me there. I want at least that.
Okay, so 6% salary rollback, we haven't counted.
Because you could save, between the salary rollback and class size, you can save the entire, we could forget the stuff up above.
Yeah, that's, this is...
And that's my point. That was my point from the get-go, see? Is that, you know, I don't like the idea of picking all these things for kids and saying, okay, we're going to cut these, oh, style this, whatever. I can solve the problem, and I challenge people, I really do, challenge people, I'm going to, just put my vote in, then I'll, then I'll go...
We'll feel better.
I think it's there already. Can we go over one?
Okay, so when we go to the salary, throw me in the 6%.
Okay, you're there. I got you.
Now, we got staffing levels, and I'm going to go yes all the way down to 88.
So 84 to 88 is a yes for Mr. DeBeck.
Right, and then what I'm, and I'll only justify it once. There is no data to support that student achievement changes when you go from this class size of 20 to 25. There's no data. It's a popular myth. It is not a proven thing in research. So therefore, if you use all those, and I added them up, you get $34 million. Just in the kindergarten, class size, and all the rest of it, that gives you 34 million bucks. Well, will that help us when we roll over to the next year's budget? You bet it will. And if somebody can prove to me, and bring me the research, that shows that there is a significant difference in achievement in a class that's taught by a teacher that has 20 kids versus a class of 25, then I'll change my vote.
These are classes of 29.7.
I'm saying...
All right, I hear you, but I'm just, it's not 25, it's 29.7. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, that's happened.
That's only for the kindergarten. Okay, and I don't know what the class size change is, but I'm assuming that the first grade, the third grade, and the, but I would certainly want to include all the other grades as well. Because if you're going to use a class size solution, you know, why is it just only in those that are mandated? I'd say it's across the board. You know, I don't like it, but I'd much rather have a kid in a French class because it's an average with 10, that's supported by a class of 40 in some other subject, than have no French. And so that's exactly where I'm at. See, that's why I don't like this forced choices, because 88, you might want to stick in another one, which would be 88.8 or whatever you want, and that's all the other grades. Yeah, I'll vote for those two. Because there's still no research to support the fact that those class sizes are paying off for kids. And it's a major budget change. So, you know what? Is it off the limits? Maybe it is. The board's decided they're not going to do anything about class size, but it's absolutely the biggest single way you can save money, other than payroll, rollbacks. And we've taken it off the board, and then, as a result, we're throwing programs away that help kids. I'm, that's, okay, I said my thing, if they don't have it down, and I get, don't get the vote for class size across the board, then I guess I don't. But I still spoke to it.
It's voted, it's marked.
It's marked.
Where is it?
Right there, that column right there, 84.
And where's the, where's the class size increases for grades four through 12?
Or can't take any...
Can we save money there?
Add a row.
Add one for Mr. DeBeck, so he can propose it.
We should be at those classes, basically, analysis we did with Daryl and Amy.
Yeah, but somebody ought to plug in the amount, that is, because it's a big chunk of money.
Well, we're at the limits right now from a contractual standpoint.
It's negotiable, so if he wants to put it on...
Okay, so you want us to add a line?
Yes.
Okay, so let's add a line, Sandy. And it would be class sizes four through 12, Mr. DeBeck?
Class size, yeah, increase.
Okay.
Grades four through 12, but then you need a number...
I want...
Which is, you know, probably will be around figures, about 25% of our total payroll in those grades.
I didn't give a number.
No, it won't be that much. It'll be, what, 1/25th? Because it'd be one more kid.
Okay.
And so, but we don't have the numbers, but it's a lot.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Let's keep going, Sandy, please.
That's it.
We're done.
Yeah.
That's, we're done.
So 63. So it's 63, AA is the total, 63.2?
Totally.
And Sandy, I think you went up to the top, because one of the things we were asked to do was, President Barrera, do you want to talk, tell us what you asked us to do? Let me just tell it, say it for you.
So why does that leave?
That leaves 62.8. I'm just asking a quick question. Sandy, on the 62.8, that accounts for all the adjustments we made to the far-right column, is that correct?
Oh.
16.
So I'm going to try and do some math here while I sit.
So the delta then is 16.3, whoa.
16.3.
It's making me dizzy.
So at this point...
Negotiations? That's with negotiable items?
Yeah.
What's, everything that you selected, what's left, there's a remaining balance of 16.3 that needs to be covered.
Without the negotiable items, which we don't have yet, what's that delta? What have we got?
So we've got to scroll down, Sandy, and if you just scroll down and capture, get the sum total and just subtract it out. Bless you.
23 minus 19.
Oops.
Should be 44.
Okay, there's 90,000 kids between grade four and 12. And I'm going to figure this out of class size.
I think you got it there.
Okay.
19, 192, 545.
So divide...
I'm sorry, what did you say?
She's doing the math for us right now.
She's showing us the total of negotiated items.
Yeah, the total negotiated items is 19...
The sum is at the bottom, it's right there.
Oops, 142.
Well, it was.
19, yeah, so it's 44 million instead of 63.
Okay.
So just give us the delta there, Sandy, 62 minus the 19. 43.7 is the difference.
Okay.
Okay, so on the items that we have two people...
Yeah, can we go through those and see if there's any room to get three votes where we've already got two?
So line five has two people?
Anything that has two, 25?
Put me on the, did we already put me on the AP test? I think we did. Where's the AP test?
69.
I'm down a lot farther.
69's got...
President Barrera, I'd like to go to the AP exam, Sandy. So we got to scroll down a little bit.
I passed without you.
No.
Maybe now I think someone did not.
69.
69, already had three.
Got you there.
Okay, a couple of items that I see that have two, that I would be willing to support. Item number four, we have two, so I would make that a third vote for that. Item number five, we have two, right? I'll make a third vote for that. Item number...
Hang on a second, Ms. Jackson, she's got the spreadsheet moving. We want to make sure we capture it.
Four's already got three votes.
She must have got four and five.
I see, did Mr. DeBeck vote for that, vote for that then? Maybe he did, okay.
There was a mistake, remember, 1 through 11. I wasn't on there.
Yeah, you're a yes for five, Sheila.
Uh, yes.
Sandy, she's a yes for five, did we capture that?
Yes.
No, you got Mr. Barrera again? Yes for five for Ms. Jackson.
We didn't make that three now?
That makes that three.
Okay, how about number seven?
Number seven, we have four votes.
Oh, because I don't have her on my sheet, okay. All right.
Sandy, if you just go down to the count, column Z, it might be, just see which are left at two. Thank you. Let's keep going. Let's keep going. There's one. So 29, English tutoring, community-based?
Nope. What's that next?
So move on. 36, I think, is that, yeah, 36. There's two votes there.
One, one Vapati.
Which one?
The one Vapati.
But 38 I can do, I think 38.
38 already has three.
38, it's, we've got three votes, but Ms. Jackson, that means you want to say yes on 38?
I don't have to, you got three votes already.
Okay.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to give you...
Actually, I thought we had more.
I'm trying to have you give more.
I thought I voted for that.
Yeah.
I did, didn't I?
Did 55 have three votes?
53 has two votes.
About 50, uh, okay, that's...
How about 42?
42.
Let's go back up to 42.
You know, we've got all that career technical education going in at your schools, Ms. Jackson.
I do have it, and I will continue to have it.
All right, I'm just telling you.
Is 55 three votes?
I'm just trying to find where three votes are.
55 is three votes.
Three already, okay. Well, I guess I can't do any.
There's 53 that are two votes.
Okay.
53, no. No.
No, 53, I had mine taken off.
Okay. Any other, any other twos?
57 are two votes?
57 is two votes, yeah.
Oh, okay. But she's already one of them.
Any other twos?
This is just me trying, I mean, everybody up here has responsibility to help close the $60 million.
Absolutely, you do, you do, you do.
I'm just doing my part.
I think we missed one on me on, no, I can't do that, so, okay, it's all right.
I don't have any more I can have.
58.
I hate one-time money.
Okay, let's keep going.
Because I did them all. I said cut everything.
Let's keep going, we're looking for twos. Okay, early, middle college? Keep going, Garfield, Twain, keep going.
Those aren't twos.
Is it 6% salary rollback, is that what that is? Yeah, so 83 is a two vote.
That's a 6% salary rollback.
Did I vote for it already?
No, you didn't.
Okay, put me there.
Okay, Ms. Jackson is a 6% salary rollback.
That was huge, so...
Now, if you look at the delta on that...
What's that?
Now, you're positive by a significant amount.
I don't know what 83 was, hold on.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Jackson, you kept the 6%, correct?
Uh...
As a yes vote? Go up, Sandy, please. We're going to go to the 6% salary rollback. Thank you.
Well, I support, I don't know if we'll get it or not, but I have to support that, yes.
So you have to, so that's a yes, then?
I don't know if we'll get it, but, well, that's negotiable.
That's where your heart's at, right?
Yeah, I know. But number 77, we only had one?
Just go back up.
Well, you and I did it the same, different ways, but I moved over to the 6%, so I abandoned that. Because I went to the 6% instead of doing the...
This was a proportional, 77 was a proportional salary rollback.
It's above the line, it's really odd.
Okay.
That was a proportional salary rollback, based on the amount of money the person made.
Right, that was what I supported. We can't, I just...
Yeah, do you want us to move that, do you want us to move that below the line, President Barrera?
Here's the problem with including the 6% on this sheet. I understand, you know, that we, that board members might support that and might want that, but what we're putting it on now, it's going to appear on our spreadsheet as an additional $38 million in savings, and we're not going to get it in negotiations, and Hold on, it just really messes up what I think up until this point has been an honest analysis of where, where our gap is, if we put that on there, so that's my two cents.
Yeah, but it's, it's, this is for the second, I mean, I mean, just arguendo here, Mr. Barrera, this is, I understand where you're coming from, but putting any of the negotiable items on this is not really, because what we have to try and do is get the second interim report, and until we have any of this cash in hand, contract signed, none of it's real for negotiable items.
Here's, my problem is, is, the problem is, is voting both for the series of concessions that we've asked for, which is the five furlough days, the, um, all the health benefits and so forth. That's one option, and that's actually what we're pushing on the table at this point. And the 6% one is a different option. Adding them together, um, doesn't make sense. Pardon me?
It's a re-graduated bargaining, and it's illegal.
Thank you. So, so, um, it just doesn't make sense to be adding those two together.
So, President Barrera and Superintendent Kober, would you like me to take an action here, or how, how would you like us to do this?
We can't take an action because all of this is negotiable.
No, I'm talking about how you've got the $38 million portrayed.
I would say put the $38 million aside. I mean, we support it, but I think that because it was skewed in numbers for what we're looking at, you could set it aside or put a box around it or something, because, I mean, I, I, you may not get that, but to me, that is a better solution, okay? But if what we're in negotiations for doesn't yield that, then I don't think we should put it on our sheet. But I think that because you got three board members that support that concept, then you have to put it in brackets and set it aside somewhere, but it has to be noted.
So keep the integrity, in order to keep the integrity of what you have done tonight, then we take that to zero, but we move it over to the far right to say.
Exactly.
There's three, three members that have voted for that.
So it doesn't mess up the calculation?
So, Zandy, go ahead and take the 38 to zero, but.
I don't know where we are now. I mean, a million we need to get to.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and take it to zero, and then we'll footnote that we had three votes for the 38 dot one. And I'm sorry, Amy, what?
I say you just change the form of the button, not include the bottom notes. If you don't lose the integrity of your vote.
Right.
Okay.
A question I have is, so what about the, with the, we have the totals there of about 62 million, but what do we have at this point in terms of totals of FTEs?
Yeah, let's, uh, she's going to do this here.
Okay.
Go up to the top. Okay, so, if we look at everything that you have from a reduction standpoint, Zandy, is the AB in the AC, or Amy, is that the 56 dot one and the 526, does that equal the 43 or the 63?
The 43.
Okay. So by having reduced down by 43.8, those are the projected FTE that would be reduced as well, so certificated 56 dot one and classified 526 dot one.
526?
Now, what is it if you take out the 19?
Uh, what do you mean, Mr. Barrera?
No, he's talking about the FTEs.
It doesn't sound right.
Yeah, but if we, if we are successful in our negotiations.
But where did 500 and?
So let's.
There's something wrong with that. There's an extra.
Zandy, let's check the.
Zero in there.
Let's check, let's check the formulas on the classified.
Please.
Because the lists of, the, the positions that we were eliminating were a few here and there, not 500.
And we got, we have 76.
FTEs, not positions, correct.
And, and, Zandy, if you have to take the time to hard code the FTE columns, I think we're okay with that. We're, we really want to make sure we get the right count. Not that I'm not doubting your formula, I just want to make sure we have the right count.
And it can only be the FTEs from the items that we voted.
Have approved, voted at least three or more to reduce.
Right, maybe that's the problem, that it added in everything that we were considering.
So, where are we at?
So we're going to, we're going to sum the FTEs to make sure we have it right, Ms. Jackson.
Excuse me?
We're checking again on column AC to make sure we have the 526 number correct and the classified FTE. That's what she's doing right now. Yes.
I know that, um, Mr. Kober has done something with them, or thought about them, or was working on them or something. Can you share?
I have a meeting with, uh, all the interested parties on this.
Oh, he, he, they can't hear you. It's $11 million.
On the procurement one, we have a, uh, I think we have a meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
To go back through that again, to kind of validate as you and I talked about what the numbers are.
It's 11, 11 million dollars.
Glancing out, it comes out to be about 100, something FTEs. Um, let's see here, the number we did, so five. I think we need some orders to, there's, there's some. See, vacant positions. So there's, let's say that's 100 there.
Guys, the other thing that has to happen up here is, we've got to distinguish between vacant positions and filled positions. So if we say it's an, it's, if it's an FTE reduction in classified or certified, certificated, but it's a vacant position, then that shouldn't show up there as a reduction in classified FTE.
Yeah, what we did is, we just did a sum total of all accounts, and now what we can do is go back and.
Okay.
Read the notes.
Okay.
And say, were there two vacant positions versus a filled position?
Okay.
We just tried to get this to you quickly before, uh, the night was over.
Okay.
Right, because one had 75 vacant positions that were the reduction.
And I doubt, was that 16?
62 points.
Including the 19, right, then it's, uh.
Yes, 62.7.
It's basically the.
So if you're eliminating the vacant positions and, and other things from the classified, I think it's going to come out to less than 100.
And then quite a bit.
With the vacancies thrown in, yeah, yeah, right, you want to separate those, yeah.
So let's just wait until we have that number.
So now it looks like they, I'm sorry, President Barrera.
No, I'm, go ahead, James.
129.
So what they've done is, we've reduced it out, and we have 129, but we know in that 129, and maybe conceivably the 56 dot 10, there might be some vacant positions in there, so what we'll do.
Right.
After we finish tonight, we'll go back and adjust the 129 or the 56 to reflect which of those are vacant. Is that okay?
Right, because I even see on the 129 classified at this point that I already saw 75 vacant.
All right. Is that okay?
Yes, yes, that's right. Um, so what was our, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Kober, what was the response to Ms. Jackson's question about the, um?
Procurement?
Yes, yeah.
I have a meeting on Thursday with James and the procurement folks, because we have to go through the concept here of what we can do and what potential savings for a year, and that's to look at a couple of different models.
Would that be an analysis that could come to us on March 9?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay.
We've kicked that one around for a while.
Okay.
So, in the interest of balancing it tonight, I think what we need to do is, there's about 16 to 17 million left, right? Which, uh, so if we divide that into certificated FTEs, that comes out to.
Do you have that calculation right, Zandy? We did that already? I'm not sure where it's at.
Oh, you have that calculation. It's going to come out very close to 195, which is what you had put.
And just, let's, uh, Zandy, where's that number?
They can position special ed can very well be filled with long-term substitutes. So when you say they're empty, they're not empty.
They're not empty, okay, thanks.
You feel that they're empty, because I don't think they are.
Thank you.
So let me get a note of that. So would you say that again for us over here?
That's a good point.
That if you have vacancies, they have vacancies.
Debbie, you catch a message?
The higher increase, and the higher increase are what they've done, the long-term substitutes and substitutes in special ed for months now. They're hourly workers, and if the position is filled, but that doesn't mean it's not somebody in there working with that child. That's what I was trying to tell you.
Okay, thanks, Debbie.
And I don't know the number.
Okay, thank you.
So Amy, do we have the, uh?
So it's basically the 17 million divided by 85,000 should be about 197 or something.
Well, let's take the, so, uh, Superintendent Kober, do you want us to use a high, medium, or low, normally use average salary? So, uh, what I don't want to do is understate or overstate, because it kind of depends on the longevity of a, of a, of a person.
We were using 85K.
I think I'd go with, try to get as close to actual, and also determine whether or not there are any of these are start-coded, because you don't want to understate what your savings are.
So then I think if you went, if you try to get closer to actual, I don't think it would be 85,000. I think it would be less.
I think the board needs to understand what the closest accurate number it might be.
So is your.
So you need to use that number.
Is your proposal to take the next, other 16,000 in people?
16 million to calculate, to calculate how many certificated FTEs that would be.
Okay, I, okay.
I'm not, I'm, I just want to know that calculation, and then we can say what we would do.
All right, um, well, I can say what, what I, I, and I think I've already said this in maybe a different arena, uh, I'm, I'm opposed to the layoffs. Um, I, I think that if we're going to, um, I, I, the people that we may lose because of, of attrition, and I, maybe we can do the probes, but I am not, um, I, I do not want to, and I, I won't vote for anything that goes above that. Uh, it, it is a critical time for our district, and I, I don't want our, I, I think that when you send out a message that in, in order to fulfill that requirement, is the, is the amount that you have to send out. And, and to me, if it goes above the probationary level, I, I have a problem.
I, I agree with that, and that's, that's exactly why I wanted that number, because I believe I can show that we don't have to go.
If they're probationary teachers, they won't be average, their salary won't be 85,000.
I understand, but, anyway, could, if you, if you want to change that number, fine, but I, I think I.
But if it's going to be probationary teachers, they'll be less salary than that.
Or less.
Right.
Well, obviously, it's going to end up being.
Around 70,000.
Okay, okay, so let's do it by 70, then.
Well, that's not salary, that's salary and benefits and.
Well, yeah, but cost to the district, we should say.
So we're going to go, go ahead and plug in the, the lower amount.
So.
Is that 232?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so what, so what that means is that, and, and just for my summary of this, is that we start with the 79 million. We've made these cuts, and, and, and then we have, including the, the 19 million that we are going to nego, going hard to negotiate now. And then we have this remaining 16-point-something, uh, at the bottom. And so that 16 million is, could be represented by 232 certificated.
Yes, sir.
FTEs, which, I agree with Ms. Jackson, uh, they would not go into the permanent staff, and, and we would look at, at attrition and retirements and so forth, first of all, and, and then so forth. So we're not saying that that is layoffs, even at this point, we're just saying that's a reduction in positions at this point. And with, if we take that 16 million and make them to 232 certificated FTEs, that balances our budget to zero for tonight.
So Sandra, Ms. Weisow, could we, is said a reasonable number, 232, that we could reduce without having to do, um?
Yes.
Without going into permanent.
Permanent, only probationary.
One of the things that I would definitely want to do is make sure that James does, gives us what the salary would be in terms of actuals, just to be sure what the number would be. Then what I would want to do is have an opportunity to analyze what the patterns have been in the past with regards to attrition, understanding that we just had a SERP, also consider where we are in terms of how many probationary employees, what the credential areas are, because that is a consideration with regards to where this FTE is coming from. So we still do, need to do quite a bit of analysis before we can commit to being able to take care of any, um, overstaffing or overreach of teachers through attrition, or the possibility of limiting, uh, layoff to just probationary. So we need to do a little more analysis.
How long do you think it will take you to do that analysis?
Well, if we get, first get the money amount, so that we can equate it into the FTE. Uh, we have started some analysis with regards to where we are in terms of probationary employees and the credential areas, and then taking a look at what normally happens through attrition.
But with, when we're talking about the number of 232, uh, if we're, FTEs, certificated, if we're taking the idea that there might be some attrition, uh, if we're adding in that we have about 600 probationary teachers, and we have 300 temporary teachers, between attrition plus 600 plus 300, it, it would be a reasonable guess, at this point, without you having the exact figures, that 232 could be accommodated within those nearly 1,000 positions.
It sounds very reasonable, um, again, it's just that we want to make sure that we, if we're going to count on that, that we want to be as accurate as possible.
Right, I understand you can't be precise about, but I just want us to know that we're in the ballpark.
We can get the data by tomorrow afternoon, too.
So then we can get, do that analysis and have something ready.
And Sandra, again, if you get that analysis, if you get that data from James by tomorrow afternoon, what's your timeframe for getting that?
We can, as soon as he gives it to us, we can turn something around within two or three hours. Because we can start our independent analysis, and then it's just how many the FTE would be.
Okay, good. So, any, uh, further comments from the board? I think we're at where we need to be tonight.
Do we need to take any formal action?
Yeah, I, I'd, I'd like to say that, I mean, there are things, you know, there is, there is a tendency, when you breathe a sigh of relief that this is over, you're so fatigued with everything that you've gone through mentally and emotionally. I don't want us to forget what we have cut tonight, you know, I mean, as I've, I've frequently said, you know, textbooks, our kids need, you know, the textbooks, uh, the OSIL program, you know, I think we should have a full OSIL program. There's a letter here from a young girl, you know, um, that, that I just don't want to forget. And there are, there's a whole series of other things on here that are simply not acceptable, and, um, so let's see, you know, I, I, we've done a phenomenal job, you've done a phenomenal job of really, you know, being very careful. So, let's just make sure we go back when we get the chance.
That's right.
And that we reinstate.
That's right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree completely, um, this, we have, we are forced to, to make kind of worst-case scenario decisions, and, um, our job is to try to see what we can restore from day one.
Yep.
Just to clarify, just a second, Mr. Barrera, just where we are in this process, just so, uh, so everybody's clear. Tonight is February 23rd. We will balance our budget in the middle of June. That's when we'll balance our budget, uh, our, our final budget. What we owe the county by March 15th is a preliminary report, uh, and so two weeks from tonight, March 9th, we will finalize what we will put into that preliminary, preliminary report. Between now and June 15th, there are a lot of variables at work. There is our continued analysis of our actuals versus projections, so even between now and March 9th, we're going to get a new analysis, um, of actuals through January 31st. Currently, we're working on actuals through October 31st and then projections. Um, and then there's the governor's May revise, uh, May, uh, budget revision that he owes to the legislature by the middle of May. We've got to always keep in mind that a good $30 million of our problem up here is coming from the additional cuts that the governor proposed in his January budget. If he gets the message loud and clear to take those cuts out of his May revise, then that, then a big chunk of this issue goes away. So we've got to keep fighting between now and, and, uh, and, and prior to that May revise to get these cuts back out of that May revise. And then after the May revise, um, we've got to fight to either get him out if he keeps him in, or we got to fight to keep him out, uh, so that the final budget that's balanced by the legislature and, and by the governor, whenever they sign off, does not include these additional cuts. That's the work we have together as a community between now and, and the middle of June, so this is an ongoing process.
Uh, President, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kober?
I just wanted to, uh, add to what you mentioned, President Barrera. We, we have to work to milestones.
Yeah.
And I think right now, uh, in a very good collaborative effort tonight, we've at least got a basis. Whether we like the choices or not is another story.
Yeah.
But we have to build on this, and what the staff has to do is go do some of the risk analysis. For example, you have a $9 million special ed placeholder there.
Yes.
So, while we recognize the direction we're taking, there's some validation, and between two weeks from, between now and two weeks from today, we have to validate and have a solid list that, uh, we can tell the, the county at that milestone where we are in balancing the budget, and then recognize between the 15th of March and perhaps 15th of May, May revise, there's more churn, then there's churn at the 15th of May, and then on our way to the 30th of October. So, we've got to work together in a collaborative way all the way.
Okay, thank you.
President Barrera and Superintendent Kober, may I ask a clarifying question for us to make sure we're on the same page?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the items that you have here that we, you voted on, uh, what I would plan to do is integrate that into our projections, which would include 2009, 10, uh, July through January actuals in our projections. And then in the 10, 11 year, I would include these items as reductions.
Yes.
To see how they balance 10, 11, and then our multi-year projection of 11, 12.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to confirm for our staff that that's the case. Thank you very much.
Let me just do, um, Mark, do we need to do one vote on this whole thing tonight, or are we, as has been made clear that we've?
No, I don't think you need to. I think that, uh, we need to make sure that, that, uh, this document.
Yeah.
That shows the, uh, the votes of each of you on each of these line items is readily available to the public.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, we don't, uh, I, I think that, uh, you've done what you need to do.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, I want to thank the board for your hard work, and now we convene in closed session. for your hard work, and now we convene in closed session.